Welcome to the February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, 2023, six thirty PM City Council meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. That wasn't very good. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's all the only part I know. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issues and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of ten minutes regardless of the number of items identified. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Council, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, January twenty-fourth, five thirty, special city council meeting on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no. Minutes are accepted. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. We are now on item five A, which is a proclamation, day of racial healing. The mayor will present a proclamation proclaiming seventeen January twenty twenty-three as a day of racial healing. The proclamation will be presented to Mr. Art Edwards, Chair, I'm not sure what his title is. Mr. Cole?
No, he's on board.
Okay. So Mayor, with your permission, it's a lengthy proclamation, so let me get going on it, okay? Official proclamation of the city of Titusville, Florida, whereas like those who came before us, it is our duty to uphold the true meaning of the Constitution of the United States of America as it applies to all citizens and to maintain communities in which they may all be given opportunity to succeed. And whereas we must all work earnestly to create courageous and supportive environments that acknowledge the traumatic past, promote healing of the wounds created by racial and ethnic racial bias, and build an equitable and just society for all citizens of the city of Titusville can thrive. Whereas all citizens have the right to be afforded every opportunity to learn, grow, thrive, and nourish environment that do not violate their safety, dignity, or humanity, and whereas every single person can exhibit an act of kindness and make a simple change within themselves that can have a profound effect on the entire society. And whereas if we all dedicate ourselves to the principles of truth, racial healing, and transformation, we can all bring about the necessary changes in thinking and behavior that will propel this great city of Titusville forward as a unified force where racial bias will not be a thing of the past and where as racial healing is vital and crucial commitment to the educational, social, mental, and overall well-being of our residents of the city of Titusville, particularly children, and whereas the city of Titusville in conjunction with others throughout the state of Florida and the United States of America acknowledges Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as the national day of racial healing, and the city of Titusville urges all citizens to promote truth, racial healing, and transformation in ways that are best suited for them individually to work together and to ensure the best quality of life for every person. And whereas the city of Titusville wishes to acknowledge the efforts of the Harriet T. and Harriet V. Moore Cultural Complex Board of Directors and the Humanity Task Force for Social Justice to bring awareness to the citizenry of all the need for racial healing. Therefore, I, Daniel E. Diesel, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Titusville, do proclaim Tuesday, January seventeenth, as a day of racial healing, witnessed here forehand by the city of Titusville, signed Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor. Herman had it.
I just want you to know before we get started, there's one of these that is placked, and I thought City Manager had it. He just told me that Herman has it. Herman says he doesn't have it, so it must be in the council office. So you will have it. It's the same thing, except it's in a plaque, and it will be placked. Sir, it's an honor to present this, knowing you as I know you. What an honor, what a quality person to receive this, and I'm so happy. I like to say all the time, or at least recently, that Martin Luther King had a dream, and I believe it was nineteen sixty-three, and we can't stop thinking of that dream. We can't quit on that dream. I had the opportunity to speak at the Martin Luther King Day event at Campbell Park, and it just hit me, what do I want to say? Well, in all my coaching, there was two words that I always used, never quit. And when I put it with the dream of Martin Luther King, what I hope to get across is never quit on your dream. Never quit on the dream that Martin Luther King had for all of us to join together and be judged by the content of your character and not by your color. And with that, sir, it's my honor, and I can't wait till we get the plaque, it's gonna look a whole lot better. Anyway, thank you so very, very much. Yeah, absolutely. Let's go picture first, and then you step up, sir. This is not very nice. And we're gonna hold on to that, we're gonna take care of that, and we're gonna blame Herman Cole for that. Just kidding, go ahead.
Okay. On behalf of President Gary and the Harriet T. Moore Cultural Museum and Cultural Center, I want to thank the city of Titusville and all of this community for this honor. Thank you very much.
I thought you were gonna talk a lot longer. I didn't have any left. Thank you so very much. You're an amazing man. Thank you so much for that. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just have you stay up there, and Councilmember Stokel, if you would come join us down here.
Oh, no. And I'm here. Oh, yeah. Oh, man, I didn't know that. I'm gonna press sexy.
Member Stokel, I was blessed this Saturday to be at the
Yeah, Leebard.
Leebard Bar in, I'm sorry. Member Stokel was one of the winners. I believe there's four under forty, and it's something that you apply for or nominated, as I understand it, and I'll let you explain that better without me messing it up. But I can't be happier for her and prouder of her because I know how hard she works, not only here, and her job with B C S, E F S C, you can tell I'm old, B C C, but she makes a difference in people's lives every day. And she does so, so in many ways, through her leadership, I don't think anybody was more perfect for a leadership award in Brevard County than you, Member Stokel. So it's certainly my honor.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You got your flowers. I'm gonna bring, we don't get to do this, yeah, we're gonna do a picture with all the council people. We'll do this first.
You guys really surprised me, and I was hard to surprise.
We're waiting.
I just came out from you. I would've done it if I might've gone down.
Your Herman's gotta be in the front, or Kodak move him. So I'm here.
Okay.
Herman, you got up here. I know it'd be in the back, so here we are. So anyway. Thank you. Congratulations, Herman. Leave him there. We present you with this. Yeah, we thought about Reese cups.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Onto item six A, which is Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The Board of Adjustment Appeals semi annual report is included in the agenda packet, no actions required of council.
Any questions or comments from council? I see none. City Manager.
Onto six B, which is the Plan and Zoning Commission. There are currently vacancies for one regular member with an unexpired term to expire on thirty-one January twenty twenty-four, and two alternate members, one with an unexpired term to expire on thirty-one January twenty twenty-four, and one with an unexpired term to expire on thirty-one January twenty twenty-five. At the twenty-four January twenty twenty-three meeting, city council reappointed two of the regular members and tabled the remaining appointments to this meeting. The term of one alternate member, Mr. Christopher Childs, expired on thirty-one January twenty twenty-three, and he was not reappointed at the regular city council meeting on twenty-four January twenty twenty-three. The consideration of this appointment was tabled to this meeting. Mr. Childs has expressed his desire to be appointed as a regular member. If not appointed as a regular member, Mr. Childs has requested to continue to serve as an alternate member with an unexpired term of thirty-one January twenty twenty-five. Additionally, there are three additional applications on file. Mr. Robert Johnston, Mr. John Rogers, Roger, have expressed their willingness to desire on, to serve on this board as regular or alternate members, and Mr. Theodore Gerard has expressed his willingness and desire to serve only as a regular member.
All right, before we get into how we want to do this, because we have a couple of different options we could do, I'd like those that are present, if you wish, to step up and give us a minute or two of who you are and what you're about. Mr. Childs, I know you're down there, and go ahead and sit on the front row if you want, and then you'll come up right after him. Thank you so much, both of you.
Christopher Childs, fifty-six twenty-seven Enchanted Avenue, Titusville, Florida. Thank you for, thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers for hearing me out on this. I know there was some comments about, some comments I made on Facebook, and there was some, yeah, some issue with that, and I just, I was watching it live, and I, at the time when I heard it, I thought, you know, what's going on? But I just want to say that according to Merabian's communication model, seven percent of meaning is conveyed via the written word. So there's a lot that can be, you know, construed wrong, you know, via a short comment, you know, on Facebook. So I started racking my brain to think, what did I say that might have been construed or, you know, turned to mean that I thought that city council didn't do anything? And I came upon, I can't find the comment or post, but I remember it because there was some replies that went on with it, but it was about the PFAS water testing situation. And I, someone had commented that they didn't think that city council was doing anything about it, and like was doing nothing, so worthless or doing nothing. And I commented on, I was supporting Nathan Slusher for city council, and I just said that that's why we need Nathan Slusher. And I, at the time when I made that comment, I didn't think that it could be, you know, I should have worded that differently is what I should have done. And I didn't, and it didn't hit me until P N Z member Richardson had commented, replied to my comment, said, I think Nelson's doing a great job, given the circumstances. And then I thought, oh, shoot, I didn't, you know, I didn't really mean to, I didn't mean to say that, you know, she wasn't doing anything about it. I was just thinking that someone else with some different energy could come, and I adore you, you know, Happy Valentine's Day, I adore you, Member Nelson. And I hate, it hurt me that, that you read it and saw that, that, and you took it that way, and I really apologize, and I didn't, I didn't mean for it to be taken that way. I mean, I know the Christmas shop in town, and I love spreading joy year-round, so I'm not a confrontational person, I don't post stuff like that, you know? I'm not one of those people you see, you know, she posts the latest balloon meme or anything like that. I just, I post stuff about Christmas and, you know, and I appreciate, I love working with everyone on the P N Z board right now, I think we get along really well, and I think we communicate well, and, and I've learned a lot, you know, while I've been on the board, and I'd hate to, you know, let that go to waste. And I've done a lot of research on everything that comes, you know, through there, and tried to put a lot of thought, and tried to come up with questions that I think that you guys would, would ask, and I hope that you see that, you know, when you see the reports and stuff, but.
All right, with that, we're gonna hold it right there. With that said, if you're speaking of questions, Member Nelson?
Chris, I appreciate that, and believe me, that part didn't bother me, but there's perception out there that we don't do a lot of work, when in fact, before we show up for a council meeting, we've probably put in ten hours. And I read fast, so this time around, there were nine hundred pages to read, and basically contracts, technical stuff that sometimes you have to read two and three times. It's, it's not an easy job. So people don't realize that when we walk in here, we've done a lot of work before we've even gotten here. And that's on top of meeting for two and three hours with city staff, asking questions, trying to get answers, going to other meetings, which is another two, three hours a week. So, you know, I don't want people thinking that we don't do anything. And two, you know, I'm hoping that when we appoint people to boards, that they can turn around and inform our citizens, this is what they're doing. PFAS is going to be a hard one to work, work on.
Yeah.
We don't have the money to do our own research. Our budget's fifty million. My guess is federal government probably goes through that in a day. So we don't have the money. We don't have the big problem that some of the other areas have. So it's sort of a, God, somebody figure something out. But beyond that, I know you're working, you've got the Christmas shop, and some of the members are complaining that you're not always in attendance. And when I look at the, the attendance roster, to be honest with you, you've missed more than everybody else. And so what they're saying to me is we're missing having a person there, a body there that can have a lot of input. So I did ask Emily to pull the attendance, and she did. And I think, I think Wanda has one for anybody who wants it. But I guess my concern is if there's somebody there who is willing to, and has the time to go in full-time, would you be willing to stay as an alternate and let that person who has the time to go in?
Obviously, I'll stay, yeah, I'll serve however you guys need me to serve. I, most of the time I missed is either during Christmas, it's really tough, and, but I was an alternate member, so I didn't put it as high a priority because I wasn't a full member, so, and it's Christmas.
This too would allow you to get the business further down the road, so maybe it wouldn't be, might be more draining, might be less draining on you. Sort of what I'm thinking.
I'll serve however you guys want me to serve.
Okay.
Do you think that your attendance could, would improve if you became a full member?
I definitely wouldn't have missed the meetings I did if I was a full member. Now, like I said, since I was an alternate member and I knew a lot of the other ones were showing up, I just didn't prioritize it on my list. And so then when I did hear that people weren't coming, I did, I definitely showed up. I made a, made a real effort to get there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, sir, on the front row. Name and address for the record, and then tell us about you.
John Rogers, three four one nine Mogul Avenue.
Okay.
And I don't have a Facebook account.
Oh, you said it again.
He doesn't have Facebook account.
I was gonna comment on that earlier, and I stayed away from it.
I am a, I don't know whether you were provided with just a sort of note that I wrote, but if you weren't, I just said on the surface of it, I don't suppose there's a great deal to recommend me, I try to be humble. But I'm a high school English teacher at Titusville High, so I kind of have to be humble because I'm not, I'm not a mega influencer, I think, in the community. But I, being a teacher there, I got to be friends with Jane Spidey, and we've talked quite a bit about, about planning and zoning and development and that sort of thing. I was from Winter Park originally, and my family's always been architects. My granddad was quite a prominent architect in Winter Park, James Gamble Rogers, who designed a lot of the kind of homes that helped, you know, Winter Park gain its reputation for, for architecture and design. And so I've just grown up around design and building and being interested in that and talking about it and looking at buildings, commercial and residential, and I, family, my family became quite involved in, when the teardown phenomenon started in Winter Park, we got quite involved in trying, in historic preservation and trying to save the buildings that are worth saving and add to the community, and got to know the politics and the politicians in Winter Park, and it was kind of bloodsport for a while. I was asked at one point whether I might consider running for city commissioner, but, but didn't, it seemed like a pretty full-time job, and I was already a teacher, so. But anyway, I just, after talking with Jane, we found that we had a lot of things that we, we thought about that were similar. Not everything, she's, our politics aren't always identical, but we seem to kind of match up pretty well in this, in this regard. But I just, I kind of think as far as, as far as building goes, I think a city has to figure out who and what it is, and once they have, I think that they need to try not to depart too radically or too quickly from that, and I think that design is important and scale is important, and I kind of feel like the Hippocratic Oath, the doctor's take is probably useful here, first do no harm. And I think when, if a project's really, really big and really, really a radical departure, I think sometimes maybe it needs to be very carefully thought about because it may be a little too, a little too-tu, as my aunt used to say. But anyway, that's who I am, what I am, I'm here teaching, and I'm interested in the position.
Vice Mayor. Yes, and you, sir, have considered, you would consider both positions?
Yes, sir, I would. I'm more interested in the full P N Z position, but I recognize that coming in a little cold, you know, it's possible that a little bit of learning time, it wouldn't be completely a mess.
Thank you.
It's a unique board in that alternates can attend and do attend and have input as well. Now, clearly, if everybody's there, then there's not a need to have you vote, but it's, you're very involved. I think it's a really good training time when you're an alternate. Member Nelson?
John, I did talk to Jane Spidey this afternoon, and she apologized for not being here. She wanted, she wanted to be here to speak on his behalf. So you heard my questions to Mr. Childs, and my concern was we need somebody who can be there on a regular basis, couple evenings a month, pretty much without fail, who can participate.
A couple evenings a month seems eminently doable to me. I recognize that there is some preparation time, you know, but my impression is that that can be spread out some. You know, Jane has told me that she doesn't think it's, you know, as a teacher, you know, she didn't find it to be, you know, a crushing burden of some kind, but, you know, I recognize it as a, it is a commitment, but I, you know, I feel like I can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Johnston.
I've got a handout.
And I think the other guy, Garrett, is not able to be here.
Mr. Gerard was unable to attend.
Stan Johnson, eight sixty Point Set Avenue. You know me as a professional engineer, and I worked for the city as a, I had a license also as of surveying at the time. I don't have a active surveying license, but I have an active PE license, and I've done a number of projects in the city. I have a number of references, including former city engineer, Richard Votopka, and clerk of the court, Scott Ellis. I sent you this today, this today, and what this is, is a, please support this petition regarding the city of Titusville, to be honest and to tell the truth. And this applies especially to planning and zoning, and also to council and so forth. I sent another email dated February thirteenth, that's yesterday, and it says illegitimate claim of trespassing and also prolonged negligence to fail to correct three-foot busting right of way. This has very much to do with the city. The city is negligent in a number of issues, and it's, it seems like it's a circus. For example, this particular circus is that it's been about a year since the city has been notified by me, and I've also put it even in ORB and pages, that the survey on the subject SNJ O's, this has to do with P N Z and you guys, is ridiculous, it's way off, it's way off, and yet the city of Titusville continues to approve it. Makes no sense. I don't know what in the world you, you plan to do because I give you the information, emails, documents, phone calls that aren't responded to, come to city council and they don't respond. So we've got, it's almost like the city of Titusville is a circus, a circus of false reports and bungling. And this is what's going on in P N Z and our city, bungling and bumbling. So I'm here because I want to stop some of this bungling and bumbling. So, I'm here because I want to stop some of this bungling and bumbling by our planning department, by, and some other departments, and our city manager. So, I'm here to present to you something, an alternative, and that is very professional because I used to practice when site plans, there's times I'd do a site plan, do the whole thing, surveying, planning, post-survey. I don't know anybody else that's doing that right now. I don't know anybody in the city of Titusville that does that as a person, one person. So, I've got some talents that I think you should consider for this position. Thank you very much. And what have we got, 40 seconds?
Five, four, three.
Two, one. Let's go. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And there are, that's all there is to speak, right? Okay. Well, I'll, I'll do what Walt did to start off with, and then I'll tell you what I'm thinking. Vice Mayor.
Yes, if it's the appropriate time and hearing the three speakers that has spoken, I would, I know that we have to do one position at a time, and I would, if it's appropriate now, I would like to make a motion.
Let me hear other, if there's anybody else to speak first, just in case, you know, just speaking on behalf of someone. Yeah, go ahead.
Speaking on behalf of somebody? Or you want?
Hold on, let me, let me let Member Robinson, Vice Mayor Robinson, go with who you're thinking, what you're going to say.
I, I still go with the same situation that I had on last week. I make the motion that Christopher Childs fill the permanent slot for P and Z.
Okay. Member Nelson.
So, at this point, and Chris can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but last year he missed six of the meetings, correct? At least according to the records.
Okay, just put that out. Let's go.
And so, my thought is to appoint John Rogers, leave Chris as an alternate. He's, he's working like crazy. He's got two jobs, and we all know what two jobs means. And then, for the next position, turn around and appoint him at that point. That was my thought.
Anybody else, or Cole or Stokoe, you want to, or Member Stokoe?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Six meetings out of how many, do we know? Because I didn't, I didn't see that attendance, and I, I know we had talked about this in the past with the rules getting brought up, like, can they just, the alternates just come? And if they do have a quorum, can the alternates leave so they don't have to stay there the whole time? Because I, I remember us talking about this before, feeling that it did feel like it was a lot to ask of an alternate to stay the entire time. So, I want, I want to give him the benefit of the doubt, had he been a regular member. You know, I don't know if that's half the meetings or if that's a quarter of the meetings.
Let me pass those down to you. This will be easier.
Can you do that?
Can we do that? We have one. They're the attendance records.
Don't, do they meet once a month or twice a month?
They're generally twice a month, but there were one, two, three, four, five, six times when we had no meetings. So, out of 18 more, meetings more or less.
Like a third, okay.
So.
And did we have a full quorum during those meetings, or did, were they not able to vote? I guess what I'm getting at is I've heard that same thing, I guess, said about me before, like, oh, you know your schedule. And I feel like that's not fair to do to somebody because I think if he were to get on and then he misses meetings, we would have a process to remove, because we've done that before. So, I wouldn't want to hold that against him, I guess, would be my concern.
Just looking at this, it looks like 3/16, it would not have had a quorum. And that looks like the only time. I did ask, actually asked Emily to ask their person, Lori, and she said they do encourage people to come. Jane Spidey told me the same thing, that she had a conversation with Chris and said, you know, we really need to have you here and participating. So, I sort of feel like give him that year to go ahead and work on the Christmas shop, get that going, and then, for a couple months, whatever it takes.
Hold that thought. City Attorney, are we allowed to pass this attendance record down from?
Is it from the clerk?
It's from the clerk.
Okay. Okay, then we can do that.
And I guess my question would be for Mr. Childs, if, does he feel like he needs a year to get his other things, or would this become a priority at that point? Because.
Maybe we should ask.
Yeah.
My understanding was he felt like once he was a voting member, the priority would rise. I think he said that.
Yeah.
I'm not putting a whole lot of weight into the absences, having, again, this explanation that it was his understanding that they had a full house, there was nobody absent, and when he was able to confirm that, he didn't feel it was as important for him to be there as if they did. I get that it's great if you're at every meeting, but it's not as though you were the voting member and kept missing.
It wasn't my intention to miss. I just, things were busy, and then I thought, all right, well, do I have to go or not? You know, like, is it really, you know?
Okay. So, if you're a regular member.
I would definitely.
You'll make it.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Before we go further, I'm going to throw in there, because I haven't heard this yet, I can't help but look at Mr. Gerard, how do you say his name?
Gerard.
Gerard. You know, I'm looking at a resume application here that professional licenses and certificates, American Institute of Certified Planners. He is a retired, I believe, planner, or something like that. But anyway, he was Board of Adjustments and Appeals, he was a planning commission. I mean, this is like, you know, somebody you draw up and say, boy, we could use you over here. I don't know him personally, and he could not be here tonight. But when I look at the, and both those folks out there, or those folks out there are fine, but I'm looking at this guy, and it's like a whole different world. Again, you've got a certification in planning, work experience, economic development director, city of St. Cloud, planning director, DeSoto County. I mean, this guy, so I don't know him. I think I saw him previously, but I don't know him, but I'm looking at this, and it's like, that's, that's a league of its own. So, that being said, I can't help but look at that. Member Nelson.
I sat down and talked to him for about an hour, hour and a half. Smart guy, very smart guy. Moved to Titusville to take care of family and retired here. And like I said, he's smart. He is very smart.
Well, he's got experience, too, and beyond, beyond a lot of people you hire. I mean, it really is. It's like incredible to me. But I wanted to get that out there because we weren't saying that name, and I keep looking at this, what are we missing here that we're not talking about him? So, with that said, is anybody else? Member Stokoe.
No, I think that's a good point, and that's kind of what made me a little bit sad to hear he was not interested in being an alternate. So, if we were interested in him because of what he would bring to the table as a retired planner, we would want to vote him in as a regular member and then look at the two alternates. But I would agree with you, he was here at the last meeting, and I, I don't know him personally either, but I do feel like he would be a good asset to the board as well.
All right, we, so basically, what we've got to do now is, is get a motion.
You currently have a motion, I believe.
Well, no, we never got, well, we did have.
But there's no second.
We never seconded it. So, let me start over. Go ahead, make your motion again and see if we get a second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made the motion to nominate and select Mr. Childs as the permanent position on P and Z.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor on Mr. Childs. Do I have a second? I don't have a second. I'll go to a further discussion and go from there. Yeah, I was going to say, is there another nomination? Member Stokoe.
Yeah, I don't know if it's another nomination, but maybe it would help if we just kind of put out how we're feeling and then maybe decide from there. And the reason I didn't second it is I do think, like, Theodore would be a good choice for our board as far as experience, but if not, I would go with Christopher Childs to go in there just because he has served as an alternate, and I do think he would make the time. And then, I do want, I would like to see John in there as an alternate, to get some experience as an alternate before potentially moving him into that full role is kind of where I'm thinking. So, I would be fine with Theodore or Christopher.
Yeah, if I was to go, I think I pretty much, you know, played that card out there, this Jared, correct, or his name? Gerard. I'm just shaking my head. It's like, wow, I feel like I'm, I'm looking at an application of somebody who could be a city planner. And to talk about going on planning and zoning, the experience that he has, he has been, I didn't say we were looking for an application over there. Guys are listening, though, aren't they? So, that being said, I, I kind of think that we, he would be the guy just by what he brings to the table as the, the full-time, and then I would think that we've got two out there that we could make the alternates. So, that's where I'm thinking. Member Nelson.
I agree with you. Mr. Gerard is, like I said, smart. He would be, he'd be an asset, and it would be hard to turn him down with his credentials.
Yeah, and like I said, when you guys were talking about some other things, I'm like, maybe, maybe they're forgetting about this guy. I don't know. I mean, it's like, I'm not, I can't hardly believe what I'm looking at here. And again, I don't know him, so I'd like to meet him more. I think I saw him at the last meeting, but I don't think I've had a chance to speak to him. But I'm just looking at, it is what it is down there. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I always have concern when people tell me that they are not willing to start from the bottom to work to the top. I have, I have concerns with that, I, when you, but, but that's just my concern, and it's probably because I started at the bottom and got to where I am today. It probably influenced all of that. And also is that we tell our alternates, when we appoint them as alternates, to say, you stay in there, work hard, and, and we will see if we will move you up to the top. If, if someone is not doing a job the way to the level that you're, of your expectation, you don't wait till the end to tell them that they're not doing the job to their expectation. You tell, you intervene and say, if you don't do better, there is some action that we may have to take. But if you just, you know, you go to the end and say, well, when you move up, well, on Thursday of 2017, you didn't show up for work, you know? Okay, why didn't you tell me that was a problem in 2000? Why didn't you wait to 2023? And so, that's my thoughts on it, and I still stick with my thoughts.
I don't disagree with that in many ways, but if I'm interviewing Nick Saban for a football job, I'm not going to put him as an assistant. The point, the point I'm making is this guy, this guy, I'm just saying that we have an opening for a regular member. He applied for that, and he's beyond qualified, if you want to think about it. And I do think there are, you know, hey, guys, I started off as a freshman football coach and a freshman basketball coach, and I, freshman, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's the real world, but I will guarantee you, in this guy's career, he was on the bottom when he started. Now, he's a retired urban planner, and I think that he comes in like a guy who's got head coaching experience. I'm not going to put him on the JV, and I don't mean that in a negative way, that's just my analogy with football. So, and I'm envisioning that way. I, you know, I think we got good people out there, and if we go that way, that's fine. I just can't get past that, you know, we actually have a retired urban planner applying for planning and zoning. We never have that. So, that's, that's pretty big. And again, the tough part for me is if you walked in now, you'd have to point him out to me. I don't really recall who he is. I'm just looking at the paper and, and what he's done. These other folks, a teacher at Titusville High School, that's near and dear to my heart, for sure. I've known Mr. Childs for a while, and I think he's a very hard worker, and I do believe that if he was to get the position, he'd be in attendance. But it's hard for me to look past this. So, that's where I'm thinking. Member Cole.
Having served on the P and Z for three years, I looked at that resume as if I was hiring someone for a job. And when I looked at it, I'm an architect, so when I looked at it, I looked at it with a John Disai, and I felt that without a doubt, he would be my top choice. And that's why I, having served on the P and Z, I know what the P and Z does, and I understand it, and I understand that his expertise would provide a lot to our P and Z.
All right, so, Member Stokoe. Yeah, Member Stokoe.
Can I make a motion that incorporates the regular and both alternate, or do we have to do three separate motions?
You're not required to do three, it just may be less confusing if you did one at a time.
I'm going to try one and see if I can get a second.
And remember, the two alternates have different dates associated with their expiration.
Okay. Okay. So, I would move to appoint Theodore Gerard for the regular member with an unexpired term to expire on January 31st, 2024, and appoint Christopher Childs to the alternate member with a term to expire January 31st, 2025, and John Rogers to be appointed as an alternate member to expire, for his term to expire on January 31st, 2024.
I'll second that.
I think that's well said. We good with that, City Attorney? All right, I have the motion from Member Stokoe. I have a second from Member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
No.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. We have our, I was going to say our planners, we don't, we have our board in line. Thank you, guys, for being here. I think everybody that spoke is, is very worthy. It's just hard for me to get past a retired urban planner. All right, with that, City Manager.
On to item 6C, which is the Titusville Environmental Commission. Appoint one alternate member to the Titusville Environmental Commission with an unexpired term to expire on 30 November, 2023. Currently, there are three applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Robert Johnston, resident, Mr. Spencer Molatar, non-resident, and Ms. Julie Weaver, resident. They have all expressed their willingness and desire to serve on the Titusville Environmental Commission as alternate members. To be eligible for appointment to the commission, each member must be a registered voter and a resident of the city of Titusville for a period of one year prior to the appointment. To the extent council is unable to appoint regular mem, appoint members that meet these qualifications, it may appoint up to three non-residents of the city who reside within the boundaries of the North Bavard District, who are registered voters and whose application demonstrates educational background or professional experience in environmental or sustainability issues. There are currently two non-residents serving on the commission as regular members. In addition, Ms. Julie Weaver currently serves on the North Bavard Library District Board as a city appointee. If Ms. Weaver is appointed to the Titusville Environmental Commission, she should no longer be able to serve on the library board. There are no other applications on file for your consideration.
All right. That's Ms. Weaver? Yes? Is, are they here? Anyone here outside you stand? I know you're here. Come on up then. Yeah, and name and address for the record, and then let us hear from you.
Julie Weaver, 826 Gibson Street, Titusville, Florida.
Okay.
I, I heard what he said about the library board, and that board is interesting because we're in the process of trying to disband ourselves anyway. So, we might do well to have a member step away at this point. As far as the environmental commission, much of my life's work has been in healthcare, and I obviously would be interested in promoting the health of our communities through serving in this commission. And I, just to be a part, you know, it's great that we have these commissions and committees and boards. It really is. It's great to be a citizen of this town, which I have fallen quite well in love with, and it's great to have an opportunity to step up and, and, and put myself in the, in the running for this position based on what I just heard. I know you guys are going to make the best decision for the town and for the city, and I don't have a Facebook account. Thank you.
Hold that one second. Any questions from anybody before you leave? Member Nelson.
I love people who don't have Facebook accounts.
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not saying anything on either side of the Facebook.
Couldn't resist.
All right, next, come on up. All right, next. Come on up. And let's see, that was?
Spencer Molter, 4660 Huber Street, Port St. John. Um, most of you know me. Herman, nice to meet you. Um, I work for Space Perspective out at the Tyco Airport as their facilities manager. As a part of that job, I'm constantly both managing and researching environmental restrictions and regulations, making sure that we're in compliance and applying them correctly at the local, federal, state, and county level. Um, personally, on my, you know, on weekends, you're going to find me there on the river, in the woods. I'm an outdoorsman. I don't personally like TV screens very much. So anything this commission decides is going to affect me quite directly, um, in how I spend both my free time and how I do in my job. So I was disappointed to hear that, um, the requirements do require that you take a Titusville, uh, resident prior to me. However, if at any point another position does open up that you think I might be able to apply these skills to, please feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Member Nelson?
I'm just going to make a comment. I would love to see Spencer involved with the city.
Absolutely.
He's a bright guy, uh, a little crazy. I, I understand. He was telling me he offered to go up in the balloon.
He gave me the tour.
Yep. So did he tell you he's going up?
I did not know that.
He may change his mind.
I don't know that either.
You gotta be careful going up in balloons these days.
Yeah, yeah.
We just had to write a protocol for that.
So, yeah, I.
That means he needs to move to Titusville.
I know, Sarah. I know.
Well, unfortunately, you know, Port St. John really is just a subdivision of Titusville. So I've lived my whole life between the two, but rules are rules.
Thank you so very much. Stan?
The only guy I had, bring the props.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, 860 Point Set Avenue, resident here 50 years. Retired from the city of Titusville after about eight, seven and a half years. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about what's going on in the city of Titusville. You know that. And I speak a lot to the point where the city council doesn't even want, want to hear me. And none of that is they don't respond to me. And this is the case where right now what's going to happen is that, uh, I've been exposing the city of Titusville to numerous, uh, environmental violations by the city of Titusville. Serious violations. False reports by the, our city manager, false reports by our water resources director, and the, went ahead and city of Titusville council members have also supported these false reports. One, one such of that is, and that's to the environmental community, is this recent one that happened in, uh, September, October, November of, uh, last year. And so, so, uh, what I did was this, this is just an example. This bag here contains at least 90% of the posters in this bag. Has to do with the city of Titusville violations, dishonesty, and, uh, false reports, having to do mainly with environmental. This, this is, this is a number of pictures taken of nine city streets had a, had a sewage spill in the city of Titusville. We got all kinds of witnesses. And yet what happens is this guy right here, city manager, he denies it. He denies it. Even though we got all these pictures, we got all these witnesses, and you guys support him. So we've got a serious problem of exposure. So what I did, see these red notices here? So I put these red notices on, on doors, on City Hall.
I remember those.
On, on, even, took it, took it to your house.
I remember.
And, and Mr. Jordan's place of business and so forth, and Dr. Stokoe's house. And, and, uh, went down south, put it on Florida Today about, hey, you know, we've gotten some pictures, sent these pictures out, Florida Today. And guess what? Everybody denies it, except these people who are witnesses. And I think even a bunch of the witnesses are denying it too, such as Jaguars on city employees. So the city of Titusville is a, is a, is doing a horrible, it's like a circus. It's like a circus of dishonesty, is what we have here. And you guys, what you do, if you go ahead and put me on, on the, um, TEC, I will do my best to straighten out all this dishonesty with the city of Titusville and expose what's going on with this guy right here, who need, you need to get rid of because of his dishonesty. So I'm here for truth and justice, and we don't have it here on environmental issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
We also have one card, which is Tony Shifalo.
Sure. Here we go. Come on up. Tell me again? That's right. Oh, no, no. I didn't even think about it.
Tony Shifalo, the historic Norwood House.
Just to confirm, because questions just asked, you're not an applicant, you're just a speaker and.
I'm just a speaker, yes.
Correct. Not just, you're a speaker.
I just, I am just a speaker. I have just come to speak for the, um, Titusville Environmental Commission, uh, as an interested citizen. And, um, there are, have been great candidates for the advisory boards. And as a member of one of your advisory boards, I'm very excited to see that the citizens are stepping forward and that we have such great talents to choose from. But I would like to say, and please don't hold this against me, there's one candidate tonight who keeps on top of every kind of situation that's been going on in this town. He's at every meeting, whether it's PNZ, or TEC, or city council.
Yes, he is.
He brings facts. He brings, sometimes they're taken as accusations, but I think if there were investigations. And so I would recommend that you put this guy on the TEC because a lot of the recommendations they make, you don't pay attention to anyway. So what have you got to lose?
Thank you.
Another, uh, I'll just leave it at that. Another positive word from my friends. Um, all right. Now, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I, I, I think that on, on the, uh, what she said, it should be taken into consideration to a point. Um, but, um, the other two, the, uh, Spencer, I, I enjoyed my tour. Thank you so very much. And, uh, I'm, I'm excited about the future. And, uh, but I, I think that, uh, because of, of the residency, a priority is set. Okay, if, if.
Yes, yes, yes. You, you can kind of address that.
Yeah. If the resident, and if, if that's the case, and all speakers are done, and if it's appropriate, uh, uh, I would, uh, recommend that, uh, Julie Weaver become the alternate candidate for the Titusville Environmental Commission.
If no objection, I'll take that as a motion and seek a second.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you so very much. Thank you all for coming out and applying, um, you know, this. So we move on now to City Manager. Thank you so much.
On to item 6D, which is accessory dwelling units, um, planning and zoning commission's recommendation. Consider the planning and zoning commission's recommendation to city council to review the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance for possible changes. The commission specifically recommended considering changes to the minimum and maximum size of the dwelling unit, setback requirements, parking standards, or specific to the Indian River City neighborhood zoning district.
Anything from staff on that? That, uh, as you, as you know, in my meeting, I was a little, I'd like a little clarification on what that's all about. Uh, member Stokoe?
Yes, I think I'm with you. I would like to know kind of where this is coming from because for those of us that have been on council, have seen this particular district get brought up, and they really like to keep things as they are. Um, and I don't feel comfortable kind of digging into changing things in that area unless there's a good reason or something. I don't know. I just don't know why this was even brought up, I guess.
Which is why I was asking, when I sat in the meeting, I was confused. I was, I never got my finger on it. And I was asking for staff because I don't really know where this is coming from.
Right.
We got Mr. Parrish here to, to address.
Say again?
Mr. Parrish is here.
So I can answer some of those, those questions. I'm over here, sir.
Oh, like, where are you? Okay, go ahead. Yeah, please. I.
This was brought up at the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And, uh, Joe Richardson is on the PNZ and also on that advisory committee. He brought it up at PNZ, um, based on some discussions they had at the advisory committee with, and the question was that affordable, that accessory dwelling units could be used to help provide affordable housing, and that we have our ordinance, and is it being utilized, and whether it's too strict. Um, we've answered the PNZ that we probably approved maybe four or five of these in the past few years since the ordinance was adopted. We've had several, you know, a few inquiries here and there that have come that real, and then the applicants realized they can't go forward or have to get a variance, um, in order to get this approved. The Planning and Zoning Commission identified the minimum eight, uh, living size as probably, uh, an impediment to using, um, to using like this ordinance. Um, I'll point you to page 72 of your packet. Um, I've included the section of the code and the limitations of this use as an accessory use on a single family lot. And one of the conditions there, under paragraph E, says that the minimum size of the accessory dwelling unit, or granny flat, rather, can be 400 square feet and no less, and no more than 600 square feet. And there are several other limitations there. So they wanted to ask if council would consider, uh, looking into this to see if there's some opportunity for changes to these criteria, including this particular condition I just read, um, to see if it, we could be utilized more often.
Member Stokoe?
Yes, thank you for that clarification. So would you say that the big issue that why people haven't been able to do it, is it because of the 400 to 600 square feet? Or what has been their barrier?
Single family lots are supposed to have a minimum living requirement, a living space requirement of 900 square feet. I think that's the smallest size that we allow of any single family detached home in our city. But an accessory dwelling unit can be smaller somewhere on that property or attached to the house. And so when this ordinance was adopted, we came up with this standard based on some practices we saw from other communities. Um, what, there's no really hard and fast rule of it. A tiny home is even smaller than 400 square feet. Um, so we just told the Planning and Zoning Commission, this is typically the, the question we get from, from, um, property owners as to what they can and can't do. And this typically, this condition typically is the, where it stops, is the minimum size and the maximum size.
Okay. And then would it be just for this, um, district, the Indian River City? Is that the only area we would be looking at? Or would it be expanded to another area?
No, man. Their, uh, recommendation was in addition to all the criteria, also look at the Indian River City. Because if you look on page, uh, 72 and 73 of your packet, in that table there, it says that an accessory dwelling unit is, uh, permitted in any of our single family zoning districts, including the Indian River City neighborhood. The Indian River City neighborhood just has fewer conditions, but they're a little different from the rest of the districts. So they're suggesting looking at everything.
And I guess so for us, if we were to approve, what advisability, you would just look and see if we should potentially amend these requirements?
If you believe it's worth looking into and staff's resources to go through this, we can. I mean, we can go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get more clarification as to what they want, or what they're recommending, if you need to.
I think you just kind of touched on what my concern is. Knowing how many projects we have going on right now, I am concerned about staff time would probably be my number one. And which makes me, but again, I, now that you explained, it came from Joe, who's also on Affordable Housing, which is a priority, I think, of us. I'm just looking at that in context with the amount of projects we have going right now with not fully staffed would be my biggest concern. I don't know if this is a priority at this time. Um, for me personally, I do think it's something I would like to look at, but maybe once we have more staff would be my, my position.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, uh, on this one, it's been stated, I chair that, uh, that committee. And one of the things that was brought up, and we, is, is, um, coming out of Tallahassee, there's a lot of information. They're trying to figure out things on how to be able to address the housing situation as we move forward. And, uh, yes, they are, they are, that idea was thrown out there to give people an opportunity to go up, so to speak, and maybe go back if their yards are, uh, are large enough. It, it has, and I read all of the, uh, the, the information coming out of Tallahassee. And sometime I think they have nightmares the night before the me, uh, they write the book and, uh, come up with these ideas. Uh, my, uh, my thoughts on it is just like when we were in, and Brad was there, uh, in, in the meeting, is that, that we need to give it some thought, uh, if that. But I think that at this particular stage, uh, we will take, uh, each case one at a time and evaluate and see how it is gonna, there's so many variables out there that is going to affect it. Uh, if you go to start blanketing and saying and changing things and getting off and, uh, 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 just making rules to correspond to the request of one or two or three or four. But just, uh, evaluate every situation based on its own merit and, and see how it goes. Because I know that all over the state, everyone is trying to, all over the country. Uh, but it's, in the state of Florida, everyone is trying to find out, what are we going to do about this housing, uh, situation, you know? And how can everybody help? I can, because you got to, uh, you know, uh, some of the, uh, uh, housing organizations are going to be affected by these. And we just can't go out there. Uh, and my advisement would be to just take it one step at a time and take it slow and go back and get more information. Uh, because, uh, Tallahassee, uh, Tallahassee is putting that information out there. And some, and everyone is, is grabbing for scrawls. So let's not move too fast.
Uh, member, member Nelson?
Oh, sorry. Um, I think you guys have covered what I was thinking, but maybe at this point, we're not ready to jump. Maybe six months from now, when we know more, then that might be worth looking at.
All right. Let me, member Cole.
Well, you know, looking at it, I, and even in talking with the city manager yesterday, I, I still don't have a firm grasp of exactly what is asked. So I would suggest that we send it back to PNZ and to get additional information. And I don't want to kick the can down the road, but I'm just saying that I don't think that we have enough information to make, uh, an educated decision on this.
Well, I definitely don't want to get kicking the can down the road because when I first saw it, I didn't understand it. Talked to city manager and city attorney, trying to get some clarification. Brad, you gave some good clarification there. And then the members on council seem to be a little fuzzy on what it is exactly. So I'd like to know more about what we're trying to do. I think you gave some good explanation as well. So I know more about it than I did, but I'm not ready to, you know, say, let's charge on. Um, cards, please? See if we learn anything.
We have one card. Stan Johnston.
Stan, do you understand it?
Uh, no, I don't think it's possible to understand. I know. No, I do, no, I do have some understanding. I was joking. But, uh, it's, it's a difficult situation, and I don't know how in the world you're going to resolve it. It's just, just, I don't know. It looks like it's, it's, you can't do anything. Uh, so, uh, I'm going to pass and let you, let you guys worry about it. And I want you to worry about it.
That's the one I wanted you to give some information on.
Please lose some sleep on this one, okay?
All right, brother.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If we want to send it back and get more information, whether PNZ or, or staff, we need to vote on exactly what we're trying to do here? Um, City Attorney, would you advise that we send it back to PNZ? Or Brad, would you advise PNZ or have staff look it over and clear it up for us?
I'll let Brad speak. But first, I would point out, you, if you send it back, it'll probably be back at you at your next meeting. And are you ready for that?
No.
Uh, or do you want to wait six, do you want them to look at it? And, and how soon do you want it coming back to you? This is some thoughts as well. So if you do send it to them, understand that it'll be back to you as soon as they provide their input, which could be your next meeting or the meeting after that.
Yeah, I sure don't want to throw more on you guys back there, Mr. Parrish. But if it is one of those things that we want to move forward with, or staff is excited about moving forward with, I may need a presentation. I mean, to be honest with you, I, I, I need to know what, where this is going and what the purpose of it is exactly. So that being said, go ahead, Brad.
We can certainly bring it back to PNZ. Um, it might be helpful if maybe you have specific questions you'd like for us to convey to them or direction.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, uh, um, the questions are, are, um, Yes, uh, um, the questions, uh, are, um, with this is that no one is, um, is, is, actually got any concrete information on how this is working, no matter where it is being implemented. Everybody wants to put it, put forward, many wanna put it forward, but, uh, it hasn't been tried and true, it hasn't passed any litmus test, if you will. So we wanna inquire into it and I would suggest, uh, uh, inquiring into it over the next six months and see how it's playing out in, uh, other places that are doing it and come back and say, this is what it looks like and we will have a better picture of the whole ballgame.
And that's, uh, member Nelson.
And I'm sort of concerned, curious, I guess. Um, all the, all the zoning categories say four hundred, six hundred square feet, but you get down to, um, Indian River City neighborhood and it's six hundred square feet plus a hundred for each bedroom and it has to have a common wall. And I'm sort of curious why that's in there like that and why we have two different sizes.
It's possible that the standards you see here for the Indian River City neighborhood were probably an existence priority than the other parts of this ordinance.
Okay.
Um, I'd have to research that, but I, it's possible it's probably developed in 2012 when that zoning district was created for the Indian River City neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it, it just doesn't make sense to me to have different standards for different neighborhoods.
And that was another confusion that Indian River City area. So with that said, Vice Mayor, is there any way you can put this in a motion that we can send it back to them?
Yes, I'll do my best.
You're the guy.
Yeah. Uh, I, I make the motion on, um, the, uh, accessory dwelling units of advisability. Uh, I suggest that, um, uh, more, uh, send it back to, uh, planning, uh, and zoning, uh, with more of, of six months of investigating, uh, of what can be done, what has been done and how it applies to, uh, the different neighborhoods and also, uh, most importantly, have some information on, uh, that, that, that question that is being asked out there, uh, not in my neighborhood. We need to know what, as we gonna put the, and, uh, put this into effect, how are the people in that particular neighborhood accepting it because it's gonna really change a lot of neighborhood when it begins to, uh, be implemented. So, send it back, uh, to, for further inquiry and investigation over the next six months, looking into, uh, the effect of the neighborhood, the acceptance of the neighborhood and, um, how, and, and the commonality of implementation in all neighborhoods.
Okay, uh, that's a motion.
That's a motion.
Uh, member Cole.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Robinson, a second from member Cole. Let's, uh, it's an advisement, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. We have passed it back to get some, uh, information. Thank you very much. Uh, member Cole, are you gonna say something or?
No.
Okay, that's fine. All right, we move on to petition, petitions? Petitions and requests from the public, please. And you don't need a card for that, in case you don't know. Well, some of them think they need a card. And these, uh, again, if you're not here, it's a three-minute time where you can talk about stuff. Go ahead.
Bill Klein, I live at Three Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I request that Titusville test and calculate the nutrient and fecal quantities that are in stormwater runoff that's going to the Indian River, uh, uh, lagoon on an annual basis. I think they should start testing water quality in the Sandpoint Park retention pond and each other retention pond that drains into the I R L. They should calculate the annual total nutrient and fecal bacteria quantities that each of these ponds drain into the I R L. Start testing the water quality of the fifty-two outfalls and baffle boxes that go to the I R L. Calculate the annual total nutrient and fecal bacteria in the fifty-two outfalls and baffle boxes that flow into the I R L. They need to determine the healthy parameters, which includes salinity, pH, dissolved oxygen, total nitrogen, total phosphorus, chlorophyll A, and the sequele visibility that the I R L should have. This goal should be met for all of the effluents to the I R L. I attended the Titusville Lagoon Straight Talk meeting on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. It was stated that no organization tests stormwater ponds in Titusville. Stormwater ponds are assumed to hold polluted stormwater and the ponds are supposed to remove the pollutants. This is a bad assumption and has been proved wrong. There are many scientific reports stating that the pollution retention ponds do not meet state regulations. State regulations for water bodies is eighty percent, for important water bodies like the I R L is ninety-five percent. Governor DeSantis had appointed a blue-green L J committee task force. They had a study done on retention ponds. They found that somewhere the retention pond is only like four days, maybe during rain or something, the amount of nitrogen that's removed is four percent. This is far less than ninety-five percent. This shows that these retention ponds are not doing what they've been designed to do. I have a lot more that I could discuss on this item and what I did is I sent emails to every member of the commission, of the Ti, uh, city of Titusville to let them know what my comments are because there's no way to report them in three minutes. But the main comment is, we need to test the stormwater going into the I R L. It is a major source of pollution and no one knows the quantity or how much is there. This was stated in Straight Talk Titusville also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Petitions requests. Name and address for the record, please.
Got it, bud?
Just your name and address and then do your thing.
Oh, okay.
There you go. It's this, we do it for the record.
Namor Thomas, address one-two-six, one-two-six-two Perry Lane, Plometto Ridge. I'm, I'm requesting from you beautiful people to remove that term, word, economic blight from this, um, committee, your paperwork, because nobody knows the definition of economic blight and I feel it's a bad term. You know, I don't like that definition. If you break it down, Webster it or something because that ain't, that ain't kosher. You know, and I, I feel that that word should not be used, that term should not be used. There's no way in the Webster dictionary, nobody can tell me where they got it from and I think it's a derogative term. So I, I ask you to please, you beautiful people, to remove that word, economic blight and just say the street names that you prefer it to or, you know, what it is, you know, don't, don't say economic blight, cause it seems like, yeah, economic, but not because people don't have money, that don't mean we're not rich inside. You know, you could have zero dollars inside your heart, you're a very beautiful person. So I think that word is very derogatory and I think that should be removed immediately, ASAP, and it should not be in your language dictionary or nothing. I asked the beautiful young man over there, what does it mean and he doesn't know what it means and I looked it up from February fourth and I can't even find the meaning either. And I know none of y'all know the meaning either. I mean, I ain't know what rock anxiety is, but it need to be removed. Like.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are, are you good?
I was good, I got one more minute.
Okay, no. Okay, keep talking then, cause I just wanna comment on your comment.
Oh, you comment then, baby.
No, I was just gonna say, I remember, um, I hadn't thought much about what, you know, where it come from and all that stuff and then I, I'm, certainly it was you, but it was brought up several times, February fourth, I think it was February fourth. Anyway, you're right, we had, everybody had a hard time saying, what is that? Well, you know, put your finger on it, it was a difficult, a, and it came across to me and I, and I really think you were one of the ones that said that, like you are now.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't disagree, I don't know the, I don't know how we work on that, I don't know how we redo that, but I will say it's a, 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 a very, um, astute. Um, I, I, I guess the word concerned, but it, it, I, I think it was pretty clear on that Saturday that no one could really say, well, what is it? What is it?
Anybody pointing fingers, honey, pointing fingers. I felt like I was in the White House, anybody pointing fingers, I'm in Titusville, so I'm trying to explain.
I agree with that statement, I'll say that.
I want that in here. Like I said, I didn't want California, I don't want that in here.
No, we don't know Calif, I agree.
And I request that, I'm gonna sit back down till my turn to speak again, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, very well said. Very well stated, by the way. Name, address for the record, but you know all that.
Trent Mansfield, fifteen-eight-five Pintax Avenue. Call on, coming here today to speak on, uh, February fourth, um, I would like for all business, especially from, from the city council, to be transparent to the public. Um, and by doing that, we can stream what we did on the fourth. Just say you had a hundred people here on February fourth, they would be packed in this room. Um, I don't know what it costs to put up these lights, but they weren't here six months ago, eight months ago. I know they weren't here eight months ago.
They, they look different, that's for sure.
And I don't know what they cost and I don't know what these ca, I have an idea what these cameras cost, cause I do streaming at my church and those are probably three thousand dollars a piece and they're already here. So my, my request is, is that all city business, I don't care if it's whatever, and YouTube is free, it doesn't cost anything to stream it on YouTube, and those cameras turn every which way and they go up and down and I don't know what it would cost to, to, uh, I would, I asked the city manager like you requested and he said we couldn't afford it and if we can't come up with a hundred and fifty dollars to pay one of our employees to run these cameras on a meeting that's very important, and then I asked another, uh, member of the board and they said, well, it could possibly be lies. Well, I could lie right here and nobody's, nobody could tell me any different. So I just want transparency with the city because I've been going through the budgeting process for a while and this is the first one that I've been to and I had looked in past years and it wasn't streamed. Well, obviously it wasn't streamed because we don't stream those because we can't afford it. So I would like us to find so, some money in the fifty million dollar budget and, and stream those meetings, so.
You good?
Yeah.
Um, we chatted a little bit and, uh, I am not opposed to where we can stream, I know it's come up in the past about some other things and, um, I guess what we would need to do, uh, uh, at that particular meeting, as we, as I said, we're the only ones in the county that do that meeting, but that, I don't think it would be a bad idea. Um, e, e, especially you mentioned something about it could go YouTube and I don't know exactly what that means.
Well, that's how the city streams their, their meetings now. Um, I think our meetings go to Spectrum also, but I don't think many people watch them on Spectrum. A lot of people watch them on YouTube, YouTube's free, it's a net-free app, so you can, you can, I listen to these going down the road, I mean, I don't watch them, I listen to them.
Hey!
So, you know, I mean, we listen to audiobooks going down the road, we listen to the radio going down the road, so why can't we listen to these meetings going down the road?
Well, what I'd like, like to do, um, city manager, is, is I would like to get feedback and, and advisement or whatever it is we need to do to find out what it costs to, um, livestream?
Yeah, just, you're streaming it right now, I mean.
Okay, what it costs to livestream, what it costs to livestream, uh, some of the extra things, I, I, you know, break it down, um, and, and, and start it there. I, I'm not opposed to that, I, I don't see any reason to be opposed to that. Um, council, anything else before I keep going?
Yeah.
Member Nelson.
Um, that was something, one of the things that I took away from the meeting was that people need more information about what we're doing. And I know at the meeting, somebody asked about the grant from the state, the one-point-six million. I can't remember everything we get a grant for.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
I remembered it was two baffle boxes. Yeah, I mean, yeah. Um, it was some, um, basin repairs. But I can't tell you the specifics, but I think people are looking to know when we get grants, what we're spending money on, what the big projects are, what council is doing. And that was one of the things that I really took away from the meeting.
I just want some trans, more transparency. Transparency is never a bad thing, never a bad thing, especially in government, more transparency, more transparency.
And the other thing I took away was to Mr. Klein's, um, suggestion is that people wanna know, uh, in terms of math, where we are in getting certain things done, the stormwater ponds. So I'm hoping that's something that we can look at as the budget process starts.
Uh, anybody else? Uh, member Stokoe.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I thi, I think that, and Trent, we were able to talk as well, I think transparency has been something that I've always been passionate about. We took a step back when cities were getting sued for putting out, uh, information on the websites that weren't ADA compliant, so that kinda made us take a step back. Um, I think it's also important for us to think about when we do have social media and we're trying to reach people because we do wanna be transparent is how do we want, what do we want that to look like? Do we want it to have that one-way communication where we're informing so you can listen to it or are we using it to put out information to get feedback as well?
Well, I remember in two thousand fourteen, when livestream became a really big thing when I was still living in Eustis, they were worried about, that was a big thing, ADA, ADA, ADA.
Yeah.
Well, YouTube now closed captions everything.
Yep.
So we don't even have to worry about that.
No, I know, I know, I'm just talking about specifically about the transparency component and then to your point as well, um, I think that we need, it's important to look at meetings versus workshops if we do wanna stream those, how does, how does that work? And I think I was the one that talked to you about it.
You did.
Really, and no.
I didn't wanna put your name out there, but yes.
No, no, and that's fine, but like thinking about that workshop setting, I think what concerned me was really we weren't supposed to talk and we didn't want to talk because we really wanted to hear you guys and then that takes away, like, there was a lot of misinformation that was shared that day and that's, I think, where I, I hear you, I know, I know.
I can lie right here, right now.
Correct, but then we get the opportunity to say, actually, that's not true. Um, we don't really have that at that. And so, and I, I speak a lot about misinformation and social media and it's something I'm very passionate about. I do like Facebook, I do, I am the one that likes social media, um, so.
I won't, I won't stand you for that.
So, um, to your point though, Trent, I think you're coming from, what I, I see a good, a good place. I appreciate that you wanna drive and listen to it and I wish that we could inform citizens more because I think it will actually help with the misinformation and the disinformation. Um, so I would like to look at, you know, what are we doing, even that format, you know, how many people do we have in that room and then we have almost fifty thousand citizens.
I was also told by the city manager, if you wanna be a part of the process, you need to be here. Well, not everybody can be here, people work on Saturdays, I mean, so.
And that's why we're look, we are going to probably.
Coach Littley, coach Tucker.
I would like to kind of explore, how can we get more citizens if that's a survey or something else, so we can hear from more citizens, so I, I appreciate you bringing it up and I feel like that's something that we can kinda look at.
Uh, member Cole.
While I agree with transparency and want transparency, uh, the meeting on February the fourth was a workshop where we were trying to get citizens involved and citizens talking. Uh, I'm not sure if we streamed it live, would it make people stay at home and not come out? We want people to come out and we want the interaction that we get with the people. I'm not sure whether that would stifle it or not. I'm not totally against it, I just want to make sure that we don't lose the, the populace of people that would actually attend the meeting because the feedback we got on February the fourth, and I think you'll agree, was good from the populace that were here. So it would be, have to be something that we would have to look at very hard, I think.
I don't wanna sit here and rebuttal everything, but this is a lot for a city council meeting.
Yeah.
This is a lot. On a, any given city council meeting, there's less than ten people and that includes staff.
Well, normally the people that come out for city council have something that they want to talk about. The workshop's a little bit different.
Yeah, but that being said, I, I'm gonna move on from that. I'm gonna, I want, uh, um, I'd like to get feedback from staff on the costs, what the problems could be, what the positives are. I tend to lean towards where we can, we should. Um, I think that it not only helps the citizens, but it helps us. As you, as member Stokoe said, there were some things people were saying that, well, just weren't true. Um, you know, there, some people, there was some talk about transportation and the buses, well, we don't do the buses. So if we can say that on, and it's streamed out to more people, that's even better. But I, I, obviously you, Trent, you know where I'm at with this, I would like to get some feedback and, and see where we go.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, what do we, what do we need to do? Do we need to vote or anything? Uh, hold on one second.
Well, um, a couple of things. Do you want us to look at that as part of the twenty-four budget build process?
Yeah, I think so. I think so, uh, because clearly, one of the things I've heard is that there's a cost. It makes it difficult, and if we're going to do it, we may have to, you know, budget it. I mean, clearly. I mean, I don't think you can just decide to do it and not having the budget. So, yeah, I think that would be one of the main steps. So with that said, do we need to vote on what we're asking you to do?
No.
All right, that's, that's good. All right, uh, Ms. Kay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Marla's Breckle, three Indian River Avenue, Titusville. Start with the TEC meetings, please.
Well, right now, I'm just trying to, you can see what we're trying to do, figure it out. Give me some feedback. Tell me what it costs.
But we get to see, we get to see you.
I, I know exactly what you're saying.
We get to see PNC. We do not get to see the TNC if we can't make it.
I think that would be certainly part of the discussion. Absolutely.
I agree wholeheartedly. Last TEC meeting, the audio didn't work, so there was no recording whatsoever. That makes it difficult for the clerk to do the minutes. It makes it difficult for Rachel. So if we had a video recording, I think that would be so much better. And I would think council would be interested in watching these video recordings, far more so than listening to an audio. And so, really get the flavor of what's happening at your advisory board. So I would definitely, if, if you have to prioritize, please consider, um, the TEC meeting for a video recording. I watch all these advisory board meetings on streaming and recordings. Um, I spend a lot of time watching you and actually transcribing bits and pieces that I would like to keep the actual words, so that I can quote back and refer to them, and that provides for better presentations and better participation by the citizenry. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kay. What's up, guys? Hey, how you doing? Good, good.
Chris Strozier, um, twenty-nine forty Hawks Place, Titusville, Florida.
I'm Jimmy McDonald, um, twenty, uh, on the one thirty-five South Dixie Avenue.
Okay.
And that's what I'm talk, um, talking about tonight. It was, I had to come in front of the board to get a, a variance to build a house. And now that I built the house, uh, they're bringing, uh, all this up about a sidewalk waiver. And I applied for a waiver, but they're never, uh, they want me to donate some money to a, a sidewalk fund. Uh, and it's like six thousand dollars, and that they're never gonna put a sidewalk in that area, uh, on Dixie Crossroads, uh, Dixie Avenue.
Dixie Avenue.
Yeah.
And that's, okay, stop the clock, please. Okay. I don't even know who to ask over there where I can get some direction. Brad, did you hear that?
So there was a building permit for a single-family home that, um, was approved, and the applicant, uh, requested a waiver per the code to not put and install the sidewalk that is required on Dixie Road, and I think there's Blanton as well.
Yes.
Those two sides, it's a corner lot. It was approved after the applicant submitted their request. Uh, we determined that it did, it did meet one of the criteria that's outlined in the code. However, in order to, once that waiver is approved, the code then says that now you will contribute to the sidewalk trust fund. And so then the code determines how we should estimate what that cost would be, that fee would be into that fund. And so we reached out to Public Works to give us an estimate, and that's what we provided to the applicant. And an estimate, I think the estimate was about sixty-five hundred dollars, based on the length of the road, the length of their property, and the width of their property. So they had the option of either installing the sidewalks or contributing to the sidewalk fund.
By installing the sidewalk, that means they can install the sidewalk and, and whatever it is that costs, they can get it at. You don't have, they don't have to pay sixty-five hundred dollars.
Correct.
Okay. Now, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead and start the clock.
All right, um, with, with this house right here, we already had to have a variance on even building the house. We building affordable homes for our community, so we already had to have a variance on even building it. So by the setbacks being on a corner lot, by we installing a sidewalk, knowing that it'll never be a sidewalk in this neighborhood period, this historic neighborhood of Titusville, the only way it would be a sidewalk, it's a thirty-feet roadway al- already, so it can never be put here unless it's intimate domain or a by easement. So we have pictures in, of the yard that, like, if we install a sidewalk into these people's property, like, how, we sold them a house like this. It just won't work. Then, and we already built three houses on this, on this block at the same time, where none of them had sidewalks. You can't even, what, you're gonna take the palm trees, the light pole down, and put a sidewalk there? So, so--
Yeah, if you could.
So my thing is, why would we be putting in, paying for a trust fund when it's never gonna be a sidewalk here, period?
Uh, no, they're different, but it's the same issue. Um, Mr. Parrish, you, you kinda heard that concern. I know, let's go ahead and stop the clock again. Um, you kinda heard that concern, and I am not the expert, but I, I, I don't know exactly how you do a sidewalk with what I'm looking at, and maybe you can help me out a little bit there. Vice Mayor, you wanna say something on that? Before we go there, I'll let Vice Mayor look that over. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I had a question for staff. From my understanding, what the sidewalk trust fund is, so if people that are building, if they don't put in the sidewalk, they contribute to that, and then what do we use that sidewalk trust fund for?
To complete sidewalk infill in local streets.
Okay, so does that happen sometimes where we have to go install sidewalks in areas, I guess? It's my understanding that this trust fund is built, because if we do need to build a sidewalk, because somebody didn't, we have that money there, should something happen? So this is a general rule for anybody that's building? It's not just we're applying it to one person, not another. It's a general rule for the whole city, correct?
Yes, and the city has in the past installed sidewalks in neighborhoods, particularly around schools via grants. We do fund occasionally. Uh, the general fund does contribute to local sidewalk infill. Our impact fees do the collector roads, but this fund is used on local streets, not on collectors. So, so a contribution here would be used anywhere in the city that there's a need to extend sidewalks, particularly around the school zones.
So in theory, so if they did contribute to the sidewalk trust fund, and then, you know, fifty years down the road or whatever, they determine that this area does need a sidewalk, that trust fund would fund sidewalks there, or no?
I mean, the, the trust fund, the general fund, so forth, would fund the sidewalk at that point. The, the sidewalks installed on Park Avenue to Leon in the last few months were funded by the CDBG program. So the city has funded sidewalk infill. Uh, we use impact fees primarily for the collectors, but yes, this fund would be used for any local street, which is the lower-level traffic streets than a collector. But, um, there's been a number of contributions for, properties been built in the industrial parks and other areas that don't have sidewalks around them. They contribute to the trust fund in lieu of installing them, as they have the option to install them.
Okay.
Can I bring something up to the city right quick, please?
Say it again.
Yeah, we have, um, like, we bought, this is the third house that we built on the street, and none, none of them had sidewalks, like, we, and, and they never asked us for a sidewalk trust fund or sidewalk anything on any other permits.
So there's, uh, on, on this street, and certainly the houses you built, there's no sidewalks?
No sidewalk, no, sir.
Is there sidewalks in this neighborhood?
No, sir. There's one across the street at the corner lot, but the corner lot setbacks, they didn't ever need a variance, like, we had to come to y'all, and y'all gave us a variance on, on we building an affordable home. Y'all gave us a variance on that last year.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Y- yes, I just had to go, where's the city easement in the front of the side?
Excuse me? The city easement?
The, the, the city easement, where is the?
I see a curb.
It's the curb, it's right there.
Is that the curb?
Yeah, we had a five-foot variance for a fifteen-foot, uh, setback, and then was able to build on the house. So we, we, uh, smirked down the house, redesigned it, everything, just so we can build and provide, uh, affordable housing.
And if, if any of this was brought up from the beginning, then we would've already had this in our budget of being affordable, for building this affordable housing, but it was not brought up, even on the other three properties that we got right there. It was never brought up. But all of a sudden, on this one, it's brought up, and we have, we have two more houses that we're building right now, and we got the permits in, in permitting, and we don't have a problem with putting the sidewalk there, like, that's easy. But we can't put a sidewalk right in the people's yard. I did the measurements, the sidewalk from, from the curve to the, you have to get an easement of seven foot, then you got a five-foot sidewalk. What, you gonna give the people, um, eight foot in the yard? Just the half side yard? That just--
That's why I was asking the question.
It just doesn't make sense for that.
Mr. Mayor, if I was, uh, asking and, and, and talking to Brian, I would ask for, uh, that suggests that we, uh, hear what they have to say, and we've heard that, and let's look into it and, and see if the rules, uh, uh, need to be looked at, uh, in, in certain situations.
And I'm, I'm, I'm leaning the same way, and I don't, I can't pretend to have an understanding of all what staff does and what all those rules are, but looking at the pictures I'm looking at, it sounds, a- and, and again, I'm going off of what I'm getting here. It sounds like they've built three houses, didn't build, nor were asked to build a sidewalk. There's no sidewalks in the neighborhood. I'll be honest with you, I'd like to see us, uh, look over, uh, this particular case and say, uh, look at this case.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Well, hold on, I wanna see what he's got coming back, uh, and you want, can you just look into that and, and bring it back to council, or however we can do that? I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that, that, I'm looking at these pictures. I don't see how you put a sidewalk there. It sounds like they weren't told they had to do a sidewalk until this house. They built three. And it sounds like there's no sidewalks near those, those houses, and certainly none anywhere else. I'm a little bit concerned about six thousand dollars. Uh, that's just me. Uh, member Stokel?
Yeah, that was my question. I was, I was just, I don't know enough about the rules to know why one house wouldn't require it, and then this one would. Um, so I just would like clarification on that, I guess.
You wanna just get back to us on that?
So you want us to investigate the permits that they have to see what was required?
I wanna investigate, and I'd like to use the word investigation. It sounds like somebody's in trouble, but just, I'd like you to look into that, they've built three houses. They weren't asked, uh, confirm, weren't asked anything about a sidewalk until this house. You hadn't heard anything about a six thousand dollar, whatever that is.
No sidewalks there. All three houses are side by side, right down the street. No sidewalk up there. We never asked for a permit for a sidewalk. Now we done paid all the, um, impact fees and everything. All we waiting on is occupancy, but they telling us about the sidewalk.
I, I, I think, I'd like you to look into it. Something, something's a little, I don't know. I'd like to see that, I'd like to see it fixed. I'd like to see it figured out and said, well, we never asked you for one. And again, I don't know this. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking without knowing. But if it is as it is, it sounds to me like I, I don't like that issue. And with that said, here, here's your pictures, guys. I, I don't think I have them all, though. Nice houses. I, I applaud your efforts, by the way.
Yes, thanks.
I applaud your efforts, went big time, uh, building, uh, houses like that. But again, what hits me is no sidewalks in the entire area, and this is their third house, and it's the first they've heard about the sidewalk issue. If that's all true, I'd like to remedy this, and I don't know that I have the power to do that.
No, staff has to follow the code, but we certainly can look at the code and see if there needs to be any improvement.
Well, even if it is the code, if they weren't told anything about that--
We'll look, we'll look at the code.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll leave it at that for now.
Yeah, we wasn't told, even when we filed the variance, um, they told us, eh, go build the house, and I never heard anything about the sidewalk.
Yeah, let's see if we can, let's see if we can remedy this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, guys. Good to see you both. Woo, uh, next up? Anybody else on petitions or requests? No? Okay, we're moving forward. Boy, that'd be something. We start moving forward.
Stan Johnson, this is petitions and requests, and, uh, uh, look at there. See? See, there's a picture of, of a article in today's newspaper, right there. Article newspaper. It had to do with--
Don't forget my phone.
Crosley Green. A black man. And what I have before me is a petition to free Crosley Green that I'm asking to support. I've got the number signatures. I go to some churches and so forth. The, uh, white churches aren't very responsive, but the black churches are. And, uh, I speak, uh, I've been with Crosley Green for some time, uh, on occasion in the last four weeks, about once a week. And, uh, uh, what it says is this. It says, it says, "Please support the petition to free Crosley Green, innocent man unfairly, unjustly convicted of murder, who already served thirty-two years in prison and also on death row for nineteen years due to our state attorney's illegal withholding of much critical evidence and proof that Mr. Green is an innocent man." Well, you know, we just had this January seventeenth thing of, of harmony and, and so forth for the, uh, racial issue. Uh, this is, this is certainly, um, a little bit. We, we've got, my goodness. We need help in this community. I mean, this is where we had a bombing of Harriet T. Moore and so forth, and we've had Ku Klux Klan here. It's, uh, it's, it's, it's one of the, uh, racial, uh, places in the whole United States is right here. So, uh, I'm hopeful that he will be treated fairly by blacks and whites, and I'm looking forward to, uh, his being freed. I got another issue, and that is that, uh, what is going on with the, um, city of Titusville as far as of, um, what I just had, that bag full of, of, um, false reports by the city of Titusville, and it's a serious issue. Uh, the city is, is in trouble, and I have mentioned that a number of times, because, uh, we have, uh, for example, water flows downhill. And that's my profession, professional engineer. I say that water flows downhill, and it does flow downhill. However, the city of Titusville, the plane department and so forth, they have, uh, issues that, that they promote that it just doesn't work. But, and they, they have, for example, inlet D six, SNJ Oaks, doesn't work. You need water flows to, and, uh, I have photos of, along, uh, I ninety-five of, uh, blocked, uh, inlets and so forth, and yet, uh, the city of Titusville, they just continue with, uh, violating the, the fact that water flows downhill.
All right, water flows downhill, and thank you very much, Gary.
Yeah, well, it does flow downhill.
It does.
And I think the city should recognize it.
It does. All right, uh, city manager?
Onto consent agenda item. We have two items this evening. City council, are there any questions of staff for the two consent agenda items?
All two of them.
Uh, council, are there any agenda items you'd like to pull?
I see none.
City clerk, are there any cards for the consent?
One individual for both items.
Okay. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Please.
Consent agenda item eight A, the FY, approve the FY twenty-three annual road resurfacing project contract. Consent agenda item eight B, approve change order number one to contract Charlie November two-two Bravo zero two-two Lima Romeo with, uh, Danus Utilities Incorporated for a change of work.
All right, we have all two. Uh, call cards, please?
Um, one card, Stan Johnston, for both items.
Stan, you only got two. You gotta stay focused now. Nope. Matter of fact, we've-- Minute, a minute and twenty seconds on each one. You thought, you were thinking about that. You were thinking about that.
I'm, um--
All right, start the clock.
Uh, I'm not opposed to that.
Which, the first one?
Yeah, but I am opposed to, uh--
Well, then tell us why you're opposed to it, so you can be on topic.
But, uh, but I only get, I get three minutes for each, so I think that's what we should do. Isn't that right?
Well, whichever one you wanna talk about, pardon, you got six minutes?
Just six minutes, okay. Well, I--
Just talk about--
In, in that, that eight B has to do with, uh, uh, water resources, and, and what I did is I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and I'll take my time and I'll send, get this to one. So, so, uh, this, this sheet of papers, which, which I sent to you by email, has to do with, uh, telling the truth and the dishonesty of the city of Titusville. And it, it has, uh, eleven items here. It has to do with that, this dishonesty.
Stop the clock, just so I know, 'cause we've been through this before.
Yes, sir.
Stay on topic. What's that got to do with A and B? I mean, I know where you feel about this. We all do, but I'd like you to really give me some information on A and B.
Good point.
A and B.
A and B.
Start the clock.
So, uh, uh, on the B part, it--
So, uh, uh, on the B part, it has to do...
Thank you.
The B part, it has to do with, um, water resources, and that's what I mentioned about water resources, so, so eight, eleven, eight of the eleven items has to do with the, the, uh, open and notorious dishonesty of those who are in charge of water resources, including the fellow who left, uh, Mr., um, Mr. Larice. Uh, and, and these are serious, serious issues. Uh, so, so we have incredible open and notorious dishonesty by, uh, city officials, false reports, and I, I've, I've itemized him, for example, uh, number one over here, I'll just, let me just go right through the, the, these real quickly.
Which, uh, which are anything to do with A or B?
Oh, yeah, they're all, in other words, I'm gonna read, only have to do with, with A and B, water resources, the, number one is, uh, city's false report and denial of the, of the, um, uh, of the massive sewage spill into nine city streets, that I have that, showed you that poster of, all that, so forth. That's number, and number two is, city's false report and denial of the millions of gallons of sewage spill into the Indian River, uh, after December the nineteenth. Uh, number three has to do with, this is a serious one, number three, you wanna pay attention to this one.
Okay.
All right, to you, "The spraying of vehicles, women, children, and visitors viewing space shots," now you have a copy of this, "it's viewing, viewing space shots with toxic sewage spray, December the sixteenth and continuing into March twenty-twenty-one," I've got a, I've got an affidavit recorded on that, "when winds blew sewage aerosol in Sandpoint Park and Spaceview Park onto innocent victims by city's water resource department," city water resource, "and city council's repeated refusal to turn off the fountains of toxic sewage in park ponds in spite, in spite of claims of odors, nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea." Then in parentheses, I wrote something, this is interesting in parentheses, "it appears that council," that's city council, you guys, "and city claimed that it was, it was, and it is the right thing to do, and that is to spray and leave the fountains on, uh, and they will do it again and again, and they did it again in twenty-twenty-two at the senior center pond." So regarding that, I, I wrote down C O R B, page ninety-twenty-eight, page thirteen-twenty-five, which covers, uh, the, uh, this, this sewage spraying of women and children and babies. Number four, number four, "City's false report and denial of the major sewage spill into the Indian River, beginning of sometime in October about, at this lift station at the end of S- Sound Street." That was, it went over the, the lift station, there was a, a, a power outage and so forth. That was a big one, yet it was not reported properly. Uh, number five is the city boiled water alerts, dishonesty. City boiled water, water alerts, and what city is doing about these alerts costing one business, one restaurant costs over thirty thousand dollars in one day. This is our water resource department. And number six says, "The testing presence of a hundred and seventy-six parts per trillion of PFOS, a hundred and seventy-six." But, uh, uh, the city, the city doesn't recognize it. We go to public meetings, I make our poster about it, and, and nothing happens. Amazing. Uh, number eight. Well, it partially, now, let me read number nine. Number nine is the secret sewer moratorium.
Secret.
The secret sewer moratorium at the south end of town that's located, I mean, why in the world would this city do a secret moratorium? Oh, it baffles me. So in other words, it was brought up at the Board of Adjustment and Appeals about the, uh, uh, used to be the Tropical Wonderland property, so the, in that area, there's a sewer moratorium that, that's probably the reason nobody from the sewer is, is, is being here, because they don't wanna address that. It's a secret that's keeping it from our investors and so forth, in the Titusville area, that there's an area in our town that has a sewage moratorium. It's a secret. Why don't we, why don't we do some other things by secret? Let's have a secret moratorium on old North Titusville and don't tell anybody. How can people invest in the Titusville if you have secret moratoriums? I have repeatedly put this to requesting the city of Titusville do something about this, respond to it, and they haven't done it. So anyhow, I'm against that.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other cards? Uh, do I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Member Nelson. Need a second?
Second.
Got a second from Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously, City Manager.
Onto item nine A, which is ordinance seven twenty-twenty-three, revisions to the police officers pension plan, establish a share plan to provide special benefits to police officers. This is your second reading and public hearing of ordinance seven twenty-twenty-three, the city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number seven twenty-twenty-three, in ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending chapter fifteen pensions and retirement, article three, police officers and firefighters' pension plan of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Titusville, amending division five, section fifteen dash two thirty-seven supplemental benefit component for special benefits, chapters one seventy-five and one eighty-five share accounts to provide for a share plan for police officers, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability of provisions, and providing an effective date.
This ordinance establishes a supplemental benefit component referred to as a share plan, providing for a special benefit for police officers to be funded solely by Florida statute one eighty-five premium tax monies. The component of the share plan referred to in this ordinance were negotiated and have been mutually agreed to by the city and the, the terminal order of police in accordance with Florida statute one eighty-five point thirty-five, and articles thirty-six of the police officers, corporals, sergeants, dispatchers agreement, and lieutenant bargaining agreement.
Okay, um, anything else from staff on that? Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, as I read and looked over it, and it's the second time coming before, if appropriate, I'd like to make the motion to accept the ordinance.
We have one card.
So, number seven two zero two three.
Hold on that motion.
Okay.
Um, I see nothing else from council. Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Set Avenue, I've been, uh, here over fifty years and, uh, my wife and I have had four children. And I wanna know, let you know is that the police department, there's times that they've saved my boys' lives, and, uh, more than one time. And even one time is I had one of my sons take off and we had no idea where he was. He took off and he was gone for not one day, two days, or a week, week, for a week and week. And so I contacted the police department, they said, well, there's, there's really no, you know, you can do a missing persons report and stuff like that, and they really said they couldn't help me. They couldn't do anything about it, but they did, they did anyways. They did, I mean, I, we have all kinds of friends and so forth, and nobody can find him, but Titusville Police Department found him. So I, I wanna say, thank you for the police department for that, and, uh, my mother's house was being robbed with one of my, my sons inside at the time, and, uh, we called him, and my son called him and so forth, and called me, and by the time I got there, it was just a few seconds later, they arrested the guys. Unbelievable, almost impossible, I don't know how they did it. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, very nice. Uh, any cards? Okay, then, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I might like to make the motion of, uh, to approve ordinance number seven two zero two three, specific revision of the police officer pension plan and establish a share plan to provide special benefits to police officers.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Oh.
I have a second from Member Nelson. Um, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, absolutely, I'm very exciting to move into that area, I think it'll be great. Uh, motion passes unanimously, City Manager.
Onto ordinances, first reading, this is ordinance number eight twenty-twenty-three, establishing rules for the use of certain city facilities and a process for issuance and appeal of trespass warnings for violations occurring on public property. City Attorney will read the ordinance, this is your first reading.
Ordinance number eight twenty-twenty-three, in ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending chapter thirteen nuisances by enacting a new article six entitled trespass procedure for public property, enacting sections thirteen dash one twenty through thirteen dash one twenty-three, providing for the regulation and management of public access to city-owned, controlled, and leased property based upon its intended use, establishing rules for use of city facilities, establishing a process for the issuance and appeal of trespass warnings, providing for incorporation into the code, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and an effective date.
All right, uh, Council? Uh, Member Nelson?
I'm just gonna say, I like it, it's very similar to our state statute for trespass. Um, but unlike our state statute, it gives an appeal right and it's, really sets up some timeframes, so that first violation is a year, second violation is two years, and that's something our state statute does not have.
Yeah, very good, good point.
So, I, I like it.
Very good point. Anybody else wanna comment on this? It is the first reading, there'll be no vote on this. And, um, call the card.
We have two cards, first one Stan Johnston.
Well, uh, Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Set Avenue, here's a, a trespass warning, uh, issued, uh, issued against my, me, Stan Johnston, and, uh, I had a police officer come, he's, oh, he was here, uh, but he's gone, it's, uh, and, uh, so I, I was at home and a police officer came to me, said, hey, you know, we got a trespass warning against you. I said, what? You got a trespass warning? I'm at, I'm at my house, well, yeah, it's, it's filed by, uh, City Manager. I think, what? He never told me a thing about that, I don't even know where he lives. So he's issued me a trespass warning, our City Manager, right here, and, and, uh, so I had a place, there's a place at the bottom of him, I said, why did he do that? And I said, well, they don't have to give you a, a reason why he does it, he just does it. So, so I'm, I'm removed from Harbor Point condominiums where some of my friends live, I'm, I'm not allowed to go there because I don't know why. So here's what my comments I wrote about, on this, this is a trespass warning from our City Manager, not for me to trespass Harbor Point, where I didn't even know where he lived. And he came to my house, it says, no reason given, a surprise, that's what I wrote, questionable violation of sunshine laws, I don't remember why I wrote that, nonsense, City Manager guilty of fraud, dishonest, now, this is what I've, 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 uh, written about him, which is true, and he hasn't commented about it, City Manager is guilty of fraud, dishonesty, negligence, violation of numerous laws, failed to respond, I'm talking about this guy, failed to respond to phone calls, not only phone calls from me, but phone calls from a number of other people, he don't return calls, emails, doesn't respond to my emails, been doing that for over ten years. Um, I don't know if it's ten years, it's close to it, it's over eight years. Comments at public meetings, he doesn't respond, and he's getting paid, what, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year? Closed doors. This is what kinda, this is what's going on, and I, I find like, you've got to be kidding. So I'm speaking at this item because, are you kidding me? I've got trespass warnings by our City Manager who lives in a huge condominium, I don't know about four buildings, and I can't go there now because of, I don't even know the reasons? Is this guy a psycho or what is he? There he is, that's him, that's the same guy, right there. That's him, right there. I got trespass warning against him, do not go near Harbor Con, I mean, I can guess, I can guess, I, I went barefoot on a bicycle, went by there today. Okay, thank you, so...
Thank you.
This guy's gone nuts.
Thank you very much. Um, next card.
Tony Shifflow, seven fifteen Tropic Street. Um, I read this very carefully, um, and it gives me great concern, um, because it gives a lot of power to the City Manager to determine what and when things, places like this room can become private and people can be, um, given trespass warnings and, uh, eventually barred from, from events, it's, um, I hate to use the term, but it's a slippery slope and we're beginning to slide. But the two things I really wanted to speak to that really give me concern are, are under, um, section thirteen dash one-two-three facility rules, um, it's alphabetical point, bullet points, bullet point I, laying down or sleeping in a chair or a bench or any other surface in a city-controlled facility, uh, which can be at any time determined by the City Manager if it's public or private and, and off limits now or not. Um, that means you can't be walking your dog in, um, Sandpoint Park or the Marina Park and sit down and happen to nod off, take a little sleep, or, um, you can't go over to Parish Park and put your blanket down and take a nap in the sunshine, you know, people call that, um, taking the sun, or, um, God forbid you nod off at the Longmont City Council meeting because you're in a public space and you're not allowed to sleep. Um, and the other part that gets me really upset is, um, J, letter J, no posting of signs or posters or anything on, on public property. Now, I know where this is coming from and what it's directed at, it's those little red flyers that we've seen, I'm sure, but, you know, people lose their dogs or their cat gets out of the house and they post posters and flyers, and now this is gonna be a trespass thing. I just think it's too much unnecessary and it kinda scares me because it's kinda the beginning of real authoritarianism, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Nelson?
Hey, Tony. Yes, ma'am? I read this different than you. I read it as the following conduct is prohibited in the, excuse me, within the interior of City Hall, or the interior of the police department, because that's what it's saying, interior spaces of all city facilities, police department, fire department, city hall, public works. And to me is saying specifically, these are the, these are, this is conduct that we are prohibiting within this area.
If it said that, excuse me, may I, may I speak?
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't, I don't recall it saying that specifically, what it does say is that within city-owned, city-managed, city-rented properties, and I would assume that, you know, parks and recreation, the parks are part of the city somehow managed, uh, we, we don't own them perhaps, but we take care of them. It just seemed to me like it was too vague. Now, I'll go back and I'll read it again specifically for that, to be limited to interior of City Hall and city spaces, I, I can see that and I understand and respect, you can't work if people are just traipsing through your offices.
Right. Or people will decide that, uh, you know, I wanna go see Joe Schmo and I really don't care whether he wants to see me or not.
Right.
I'm just gonna trot back, but...
Yeah, I mean, I, I worked in a place where access was limited, uh, for a number of years and, um, I understand and respect that. I just am worried about it being too generalized and too much power and authority given to, um, one particular person. I know there's an appeal process now if you do get trespassed, but, um, I didn't see much leeway for other people to have any... to have any input into what and when things are designated as off-limits and private properties.
Go back and reread it.
Yeah, Councilmember Nelson, it's thirteen dash one-twenty-three. It's called Facility Rules.
Yes.
And that states, Facility Rules, period. The following conduct is prohibited within the interior spaces of city facilities of the city of Titusville. So, it's talking about your buildings.
City facilities, but.
The interior spaces.
So, am I totally incorrect, then, that the parks and things, the exterior spaces, the plazas, say?
Sam Quentin Park.
Down, down, well, not, not there, but say the pla, out here by the water fountain? I mean, not, but the water fountain, the pool that you have outside the fa.
Yeah, 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 fountain, yeah.
Yeah, the plaza. Let's call it the plaza. That's not the interior of the building, but you certainly are gonna regulate what can happen out there.
But these rules only apply to the interior spaces of the city.
This doesn't apply to the parks, and I can, I can safely sit down on the bench and take a nap?
Correct. This is the interior facility.
Thank you for clarifying that, and I hope we hold to that.
Well, we, we'll hold to that. I mean, my understanding, and I haven't seen it much more than you have, and clarity comes with more understanding, that's why it's a first reading, is I think it's more about a safety issue for those people, and certainly we, and if you go on YouTube, you see it every day, these people, you know, you can't do that. And you have to have some rules. But as far as, the other thing you said that I don't think is true, and I think that he can clarify that for me, city manager doesn't get to decide what's public and private. He doesn't just walk in and say, that's public and that's private. I mean, it's designated public or private, private, you know, Burger King is private. We can, it's not public.
No, but, but within the, I'm referring to within the, the city properties that, that were mentioned in this, and I should have printed it out, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good. It was fine. I appreciate you bringing up those points.
Instead of taking notes on.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other cards?
But Mayor, I also wanted to point out, the rules do apply to parks, but not these facility rules. They apply to interior, but the trespass procedures will apply to anything you own. Yeah. So, no, so as far as the appeal process, whenever you do trespass, so there are park rules that the county probably developed, hours of operation, things of that nature. So, if you violate those rules, then in your trespass, this would come into play. But the facility rules are only particular to interior facilities.
You can fall asleep in the park and you're fine?
Yes, sir.
Member Stokel?
Yep, and I would just like to add, there is an appeal process built into this, and obviously, if there's an issue, council, we would know, and we would be able to take action if somebody is using too much power or authority. So, I'm not concerned about this, the way it's written.
And you already have, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And you already have the rules for trespassing at the park already. So, the difference is, now people have an appeal process, and before, you just got locked up.
All right. City manager. There's no more cards, right? City manager.
Onto item ten B, which is small-scale amendment plan number eight, twenty-twenty-two for one-eight-eight-one Knox McRae. This is the first reading, and City Attorney will read for the record. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning authority, considered this request at the rate February twenty-twenty-three meeting and recommended denial due to lack of information. Specifically, the commission requested information on the division of the property between the existing and new land uses and the zoning parking situation. Conditions relating to the present use and sewer capacity, the vote was four-one. This is your first reading. The second reading and public hearing will be heard on twenty-eighth February twenty-twenty-three at six-thirty.
Ordinance nine, twenty-twenty-three. This is the land use ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending the ordinance number sixty-nine-ten-eight-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately three-point-seven-nine plus or minus acres of property located on Knox McRae Drive, having Bovard County parcel ID numbers twenty-two dash thirty-five dash twenty-one dash zero-zero dash two-five-eight, twenty-two dash thirty-five dash twenty-one dash zero-zero dash two-five-eight-point-one, and twenty-two dash thirty-five dash twenty-one dash zero-zero dash two-five-eight-point-three, from commercial high-intensity future land use designation to high-density residential future land use designation, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number ten, twenty-twenty-three. This is a zoning ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five, nineteen-ninety-three of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the community commercial CC zoning district to the multifamily high-density residential R-three zoning district on approximately three-point-seven-nine plus minus acres of property located on Knox McRae Drive, Titusville, Florida, Bovard County parcel ID numbers twenty-two dash thirty-five dash twenty-one dash zero-zero dash two-five-eight, twenty-two dash thirty-five dash twenty-one dash zero-zero dash two-five-eight-point-one, and twenty-two dash thirty-five dash twenty-one zero, dash zero-zero dash two-five-eight-point-three, and providing for an effective date.
You're up. Okay. Go ahead, Brad.
This is a first reading, so I'll try and answer any questions you have. The public hearing, as already stated, will be February twenty-eighth.
Counsel, any questions?
I have one question. There's a ditch on the property, and is mentioned in one of the reports. I was curious, is it a functional ditch? Is it just something that goes nowhere?
I believe you're referring to a canal or retention pond in the back of this property that's being proposed to be changed to?
Probably.
And where does that go? I don't have any info, I don't know the answer as to what flows where in that canal. And as far as that retention pond, I'm assuming it's related to the adjacent development.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Brad. The consideration here is simply to change from commercial to residential?
There's two requests here. One is to change the land use, amending the city's comprehensive plan, and then subsequently like that, to rezone the property, to rezone the city's zoning map.
Yeah, once the rezoning done, all of the requirements that they need to meet will be put in the plaque and all of the plans, and city staff will oversee all of that.
If the zoning is approved, consistent with the comprehensive plan, then any development would have to be consistent with any standards or requirements of that zoning district.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from counsel? Member Stokel?
I was just wondering if the applicant was here to speak or answer any questions?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Then, I guess it will have to wait till the second hearing.
Call the cards, please.
One card. It's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points at Avenue. I'm a registered professional engineer. I'm going to request that the city of Titusville review this property, and it sounds like there's a ditch there. I know this is the old Publix, is that how it, it appears that it may be involved in the stormwater management plan as far as maintenance of the ditch and requirements for access to, to adequately maintain that ditch. So, I'm especially asking for the city of Titusville to look into this matter, because the city of Titusville has repeatedly bungled, and bungled, and bungled this issue about stormwater master plan of greater Titusville and reviewing it. Just haven't done it. It's, it's horrible. So, maybe this time, they can do something right. I'm hoping they will. But, thank you.
Thank you. City manager? Oh, any other cards? City manager?
Onto small-scale comprehensive plan amendment number, SSA number nine, twenty-twenty-two, wealth hospitality. This is the first reading of the ordinance. City Attorney will read the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning authority, will consider this request at their twenty-two February twenty-twenty-three meeting. Your public hearing is scheduled for twenty-eighth February twenty-three, beginning at six-thirty. City Attorney?
Ordinance number eleven, twenty-twenty-two. This is the land use ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty-nine-ten-eight-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately three plus or minus acres of property located on Helen Hauser Boulevard, having Bovard County, County parcel ID number twenty-two dash thirty-five dash thirty dash AV dash ninety-point-zero-one, from commercial high-intensity and conservation future land use designation to commercial high-intensity future land use designation, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number twelve, twenty-twenty-three. This is the zoning ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty-seven dash nineteen-ninety-seven of the city of Titusville, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the general use GU zoning district to the tourist T zoning district on approximately three plus or minus acres of property located on Helen Hauser Boulevard, Titusville, Florida, Bovard County parcel ID number twenty-two dash thirty-five dash thirty dash AV dash ninety-point-zero-one, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Ms. Perkins, you want to go with, or just questions?
This is also a first reading of both the land use and the rezoning ordinance. I'll try and answer any questions you have. Again, the public hearings are scheduled before PNC on the twenty-second, and City Council on the twenty-eighth.
Member Stokel?
Yes, it looks like for the land use, they're wanting to get rid of the conservation portion. Can we do that?
Can the City Council change the land use?
Away from conservation, like?
Change conservation to something else?
Right. And what, and if we can, what's the criteria for that?
The criteria, as far as our review, is in the staff report. So, we've identified several comprehensive plan, object, goals, objectives, and policies that we believe are relevant to this application. And so, we've tried to address them to see how this application is consistent with those GOPs. That would be the basis of our recommendation as to, as far as whether this is an appropriate land use change or not. In addition, we'd look at the evidence that's submitted to us by the applicant, which is part of the exhibits here. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I just, I'm trying to remember the last time we have changed the conservation land use, and I guess it makes me nervous because I think we're getting into the wetlands, and I know that's been a topic of discussion for us a lot. I just have concerns as to when do we stop building and start, and mitigating wetlands. And I don't know. I'm not an environmentalist. So, I just have some concerns, I guess.
I think to answer your question further, the policies that you see that we've identified inside the comprehensive plan, and there may be other policies that we did not specifically identify, in addition to the city's code, would provide the process as far as how we can review or approve the change of a land use and amending the comprehensive plan by removing the conservation land use and replacing it with something else, and then the zoning, of course. And then, again, as to Mr. Robinson's previous question, the previous item, once the zoning is approved on the property, any development proposal would have to be consistent with that zoning. And so, it would have to abide by the development standards there and any process that we have, including filling in wetlands. And our process is primarily based on whatever the state requirements are, as far as that.
And what would happen if we were to approve it, and then St. John says, no, or it's not going to work? Does the land use and zoning stay the same to what we changed it, or would we need to change it back?
That's correct. It would stay.
It would stay, but they can't do anything because St. John wouldn't let them. So?
That is possible.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, possible, but not absolute. And my concern is very, very much conservational. I got questions all over this particular item, and they're all dealing with, with conservation. And as you can look at the film from last, our last briefing, from the St. John River Water Development, I'm concerned, very much concerned about the developers going out there, and they, you know, they come up with all, they didn't get all of the necessary permits, and, and all of a sudden, when the problem is created, the after results, and all of a sudden, we say, whoops. So, I want to, I want to see that all of, if any conservation concerns about approving this item, I want them, I request that they specifically be addressed. Any conservation concerns about this particular request, I want them specifically addressed, and how they, how we're going to, if they are in, we, they are in danger, how are we going to address that? Is that fair?
Well, correct. When this item comes to you for a public hearing at your next meeting, you'll apply your comprehensive plan, your code criteria to the request for the land use change. So, this is a conservation land use. So, you'll look at the functionality of the wetlands and the other criteria as outlined by your staff at the next meeting, and you'll apply, of course, the evidence presented as to whether or not the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, based on this wetland and evaluation of that, and the evidence at that hearing. Now, of course, as they develop, other codes will come into play as far as environmental studies and impacts, and that'll be part of, of the development. And the request before you now is whether or not you are going to change the land use and zoning based on consistency with the comprehensive plan and meeting your code criteria.
Okay. So, my request is within the boundaries?
Well, I want to just clarify, let's just understand what you're asking here. The information you see in the packet, the application, the staff report, we're not anticipating any additional information to be presented to you at the public hearing, other than what maybe the applicant might present. But as far as what you see in this packet, is what you'll see on the twenty-eighth.
With the applicant?
With the applicant.
I think that would be the.
But it's still, you know, we, if it goes on, it's still what you have presented to us. We know that the comprehensive, it can, we can make it comply. We can make a lot of things comply. But my concern is how is it truly going, if, if we go out there and we shift this and we shift that, how is it really going to affect?
That would be, I think that would be, I agree with what you're saying, and I think that that would be something we'd get questioned more next week when we have the, or two weeks, when we have the applicant who asked, would answer those.
Okay.
Member Nelson?
I sort of had the same question, Joe. And, but it was sort of broader. So, here we have Titusville, and you can pay and mitigate your wetlands, but I don't know how far away Farmington is, but the wetlands that we buy are now at Farmington. And so, I asked Brad this afternoon, I didn't get a chance to call Woody and ask him, but apparently, St. John picks out these areas, and I'm like, but we're taking out of Titusville, and we're putting someplace else. And that doesn't sit real well with me. And I don't know what we need to do to change that. So, I mean, it may not be, well, it is, because they're going to have to buy wetland mitigation credit, and it's going to go to Farmington. So, I don't know if we can change it, but I sure want to know what the process is, and if maybe we can change it so that we're buying a property in Titusville that becomes part of that wetland mitigation plan. I think.
Yeah, you guys are saying the same thing, and I think we all, and Member Stokel has said that, and I haven't yet, but I will tell you that there's some concerns that we're in a wetland situation again, and that we're looking to mitigate, and certainly we have more that we'll need to hear. I'll leave it at that right now. Any other?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Brad, looks like you might have part of an answer.
So, you're asking, I can provide some information, I think, as a response to your concern, just as far as St. John's process. And just on their website, I'm just gonna read a couple paragraphs. On their website, they say, while it may not be readily obvious to the public why one wetland area is more valuable than another, or how impacting a wetland in one place can be offset by preserving one somewhere else, this value is determined by many factors, including the location, condition, size, and type of wetlands. It further says, while the mitigation may occur some distance from the impacted wetland, it is usually within the same drainage basin. This is because surface waters pay no heed to political or geographic boundaries. And an improvement And an improvement to one part of the basin, even if it's in a different county, and in our case, another city, benefits the basin at large, and that's how the state looks at it.
What happens here? Call the cards, please?
One card, it's Dan Johnston.
Pass? No? Okay, no. We'll leave it alone. You'll have to come up next week. All right, then, no, no other cards? City Manager.
Onto the small-scale comprehensive plan, S S A number ten, twenty twenty-two, Titusville Chance Partners on Columbia Boulevard. This is the first reading of S S A number ten, twenty twenty-two. Your public hearing is scheduled for twenty-eight February twenty twenty-three at six-thirty. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning authority, considered this request at their eight February twenty twenty-three and recommended approval of S S A ten, twenty twenty-two. Chance Partner Small-Scale Land Use Amendment by five-zero. Approve the Planning and Development P D zoning ordinance with master plan and conditions five-zero. Included with the motion to approve the rezoning, there were two additional conditions recommended by P and C that there should be no burning of vegetation as part of the site. Construction and buildings shall be no taller than thirty-five feet within seventy-five feet of the property line. City Attorney.
Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, this is your land use ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty dash nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville. By amending the future land use designation for approximately thirty-three acres of land located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Columbia Boulevard and Challenger Memorial Parkway with parcel ID number twenty-two dash thirty-five dash thirty-three dash zero zero dash five oh six. From the commercial high intensity future land use designation to the high-density residential future land use designation, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and this is your zoning ordinance. An ordinance of the city, an ordinance, amending ordinance number five, nineteen ninety-three of the City of Titusville, Florida. By amending the zoning map, made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification of approximately thirty-three acres of land located at the southwest corner at the intersection of Columbia Boulevard and Challenger Memorial Parkway with parcel ID number twenty-two dash thirty-five dash thirty-three dash zero zero dash five oh six. From the regional commercial zoning district to the planned development zoning district and providing for an effective date.
Uh, Mr. Parrish?
Again, these are first readings of both the land use and zoning ordinance. This was heard by planning and zoning, and you can see the recommendations. This will be brought before your public hearing on the twenty-eighth before City Council. I'll try and answer any questions you have here. The applicants are here also to answer any questions.
Uh, Vice Mayor.
And, and looking at planning and zoning and, and reading the draft, were there statements and requests being made that was outside of the purview responsibility for approving this request?
As far as the vegetation, burning, no burning of vegetation. That is something that is allowed or not prohibited in our code right now. Based on the applicant, the requests of several members of the community. They requested that this be a condition that there would be no burning when site construction occurs. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this to be a condition of the planned and development rezoning ordinance. So in other words, it's a process requirement. I, I don't know what the basis of it is. I heard testimony about that it's allergies, pollution, and such, but that's the limit of that, what I heard at that meeting. The other condition that they asked for, that was suggested here was based on communicate, the back and forth of concerns of people with height and near their homes, which is legitimate to zoning. We had suggested that maybe carry over the existing setback requirement that's governing this property now that, uh, of seventy-five feet and to supply that to limit the height of structures within that distance requirement. So you get that kind of transitional zoning from property lines. So the further into the property, the higher buildings are allowed to be. And we thought that was appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Member Nelson?
I'm just going to say, I, I have to say, I understand the no burning. Remember way back when we had all the fires, Scottsburg, and my dad had asthma, and that just tore him up, the smoke. And so this is an area where you have residents, residents all around. And if any of those people have allergies, asthma, C O P D, they had C O P D. I mean, it just, it's hard for those people. So I can, I can understand that.
Member Stokoe.
Yep, and to Member Nelson's point, I think we talked about that before on different ordinances we've discussed and whether or not we should include the burning. So I think that's probably why that got brought up. And then not necessarily specific to this item, but I did want to thank staff for these maps because this is the second item on the agenda now where we're seeing a request to change commercial high intensity to high density, um, commercial to residential. And I think it's important, as we're talking about the vision of Titusville, looking at the map and seeing where commercial high intensity is currently, if we like it there, or if we are starting to see a trend with that being, wanting to be changed over to high-density residential. And if that is the vision for Titusville, because typically what we're looking at is to see if it's consistent with the other land use around it. And we could potentially run into an issue where we keep building, building, building residential, and then where's the commercial, and is it our vision? So not necessarily for this particular item, but I do think it's important that we think about that as we are looking at these items.
Okay. And then you want to add to, to that? Are you good?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, any cards, please?
Kim Ruzanka.
Hi there.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council, Kim Ruzanka, Lacy Lyons Ruzanka, Rockledge, Florida, here on behalf of Chance Partners and, and the property owner. We are here to answer questions. The entire development team is here. They've put in cards. There were fourteen people that came to planning and zoning, so we weren't sure what to expect. But I think we calmed their fears because their concern was the height, which we intend to have thirty-five feet at the property line to the south, and also the burning on site, which the owner and developer readily agreed to add those conditions and all the other conditions raised by staff. So we're here to answer any questions. We have a PowerPoint for two weeks from now, but in the essence of time, we're just here to answer any questions that may come up.
Got any questions, guys? I hate to have her come up here and wait this whole meeting and then get up here and say, we got nothing. So, thank you, Member Stokoe.
Um, just to verify, so it looks like you guys are only asking for a part of the property to be changed to high-density residential. Some of it will still stay commercial. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are there any plans to do anything with the commercial portion at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay.
But we are leaving six point seven four acres.
Yes, thank you.
I see no other questions. Thank you, guys, for being here. Um, any other cards?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm not sure which cards are part of the applicant. Do you know the, the other names? Okay, and then also we have Kay Seenong.
No, no, I think there's.
No, it's okay. So Kay Seenong will be the next one.
Okay, come on, Kay. Kay, come on up. Yeah, I wasn't quite sure where we were going with that either.
Kay Seenong, twenty-three sixty, Maryland. I'm not an engineer. For this first reading, I would like to draw your attention to a few concerns from staff's report. While the applicant proposes four hundred ninety-nine, four hundred ninety-seven residential units, the project is limited to a maximum of four hundred and eighty-eight units for this high-density residential use. Per staff, this project's four hundred, per staff, this project's four hundred and eighty-eight units could increase the city's population by two point two percent as it is expected to generate a population growth of one thousand one hundred new residents with significant water and sewer needs. Thirty-one hundred daily vehicle trips are expected by the city's engineers on the surrounding state roads. L D Rs stipulate the proposed development shall not negatively impact the quality of life for any adjacent residential uses, including any substantial increases in traffic. Thirty-one hundred vehicle trips onto Highway four oh five will substantially increase traffic. Any traffic impacts demonstrated by a traffic analysis shall be mitigated by the developer in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Consider the impacts of the nearby highways four oh five and fifty intersection and the impact to Grissom Road. Where this increase of eleven hundred new residents and their traffic is very concerning to me. The project does not provide the required parking. The L D Rs indicate two parking spaces are required per unit for a total of nine hundred and seventy-six. The site plan provides a total of seven hundred and thirteen parking spaces, two hundred and sixty-three spaces short of the requirement. The current site plan has already reached its maximum impervious area. Therefore, these parking spaces would be required to be pervious to meet A C C standards of a maximum forty percent impervious. Per staff, public facilities are available to serve the site, and no concurrency related issues were identified. Staff indicates this school district will evaluate the proposed development for school concurrency and determine if there's enough capacity to accommodate the new development. A school impact analysis capacity determination dated February seventh, twenty twenty-three evaluated the proposed development for school concurrency and determined that, quote, "At this time, Imperial Estates Elementary School is not projected to have enough capacity for the total, uh, projected and potential students from Titusville Chance Partners Development." The closest elementary school Imperial Estates capacity is at ninety-four percent, according to the chart in the agenda packet. The analysis indicates Kokina is the only elementary school in the concurrency service area. Could I have another minute or two?
Okay, one minute, one minute, yes, one minute.
Kokina is the only elementary school that can accommodate additional students in the concurrency service area. Kokina's capacity is at seventy-nine percent. However, this school's rating is low as students are testing at below state level. Please consider this concurrency related issue. This project's thirty-two point five five acres are heavily wooded. Staff suggests existing native vegetation could be preserved by integrating tree clusters into the development, thus creating interesting vistas. I would suggest that these courtyards have some mature trees to reduce temperatures and create a park-like setting. Note that the residents at the community meeting expressed their desire for mature trees be preserved, particularly in the fifty-foot buffer. L D Rs require that proposed development shall not negatively impact adjacent conservation lands, but the Enchanted Forest is only a mile away. Please consider what would be the impact to the Enchanted Forest. So thank you for these, taking these things into consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No, I see none. Thank you. Next card?
Last card is Dan Johnston.
Thank you, sir.
Um. Okay, I was going to question.
Question?
So.
You let her sit down, then you're going to ask her a question.
No, we're not, no, no.
Go ahead.
So can we have electric charging stations?
What are you talking about? Oh, that was for Kay?
Yeah, that's not for Kay. That's for Kim.
Oh, I thought you were asking Kay. Well, that's what I said. You let her sit down. I didn't hear you.
Oh, without.
Okay.
I'm not going to get a charging station yet.
Good evening. Judd Bobelin, Chance Partners, one seven five four nine, here aisle circle, and that's Winter Garden, Florida. To the charging stations, yes, we actually provide probably eight to ten charging stations per building.
Yay!
We do that with a company called Summit Connect, so residents are able to use it, not public.
Okay.
Don't say that.
We're not supposed to agree to it right now. We're supposed to wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And, and I certainly can see where ten years, five years, but down the road, I think that's certainly going to be, uh, more than an amenity. So I'll just leave it at that. But I, I get it. I don't have an electric car, so I can sit there all day and watch it, but it's not going to fill my car up. As long as it got a pump, yeah. Yeah, that's the next question. You're going to have gas pumps?
Well, these days, you might not get a pump.
All right, that's all. City Manager.
Um, next item is eleven A, which is the completion of the F Y twenty-three employee pay adjustments and advisability to conduct legislative body compensation and benefits review. On twenty-six April, twenty twenty-two, council awarded a contract to Evergreen Solutions, L L C to conduct a comprehensive employee pay and compensation study. This study was completed in July, twenty twenty-two, and the first half of the recommended adjustments were included in the F Y twenty-three budget approved in September, twenty twenty-two, and implemented at the first pay period in F Y twenty-three, which was one October. During the F Y twenty-three budget build, staff informed council that the second half of the pay plan would be implemented upon confirmation of existing funds in the city's budget and ratification of the F Y twenty-three wages by the city's labor unions. Sufficient funds have been identified within the city's existing appropriated funding levels, and the city has reached agreement with all collective bargaining agreements for the contracts of F Y twenty twenty-three. Upon council's approval, staff will adjust employees' current pay rates in accordance with the recommended pay levels and ratified union agreements in effect. And you remember, we budgeted for nine firefighters in the F Y twenty-three budget. And during the budget process, we were awarded the Safer Grant, which is a federal grant that funds those wages for three years. So we're able to move that money now because we have received it from the Safer Grant, which is now funding those firefighters that we budgeted for. That, that money, we are going to shift back over to complete the, the F Y twenty twenty-three budget pay adjustments.
Very good. I will say, to start off, that I think it's a, been an outstanding and well-planned pay plan. It's been something that I've heard discussed and been a little privy to on occasion that there's a real effort to, you know, bring our salaries up within the city. Our workers work hard. We not only need to bring them up to be, where they need to be, but also to be competitive. I can tell you, without getting into great detail, I can tell you there are, I'll just use something I'm familiar with. I know that Brevard Public Schools have lost a lot of employees to the Space Center. And that's a good thing for them. I'm not saying anything negative, but I am saying that we need to be as competitive as we possibly can because that's the, the X's and the O's and the A's and the B's of it. We've got to stay competitive. But there's also a respect there that I have heard City Manager discuss with me, and I certainly agree. We have some very, very hardworking people that we'd like to retain and reward with the best possible salary that we can afford. And obviously, we can't pay what we can't afford. So I appreciate the very organized and well-planned out, you know, bringing this out as you can. Vice Mayor.
Yes, City Manager, that's, again, we've talked about that. My only concern is down the road. We know that we're able to put these dollars forth because of the CEFL grant, and it gives us that leadway. But we're going, you're going to have to use your brilliant mind as we go, when we get past those three years.
Yes, sir. We are planning for those as, as currently. And what the Safer Grant does, it allows cities to bring on firefighters and first responders and build to accepting that financial responsibility for three years down the road.
Right, so you understand what I'm thinking. We got, thank you.
Okay, anything else from staff before I go to cards? I see none.
Now, now, this is the first portion. I'm going to need two votes tonight.
Right.
So the first portion is to approve that. Additionally, the legislative body compensation levels have not been reviewed or adjusted beyond the periodic cost of living adjustment since nineteen eighty-four, or question ninety-four. Upon approval of this advisability, the levels will be reviewed and recommendations be brought forward to City Council for consideration. And this is taking a look at your pay and benefits.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you, your button pushed?
Yeah, if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, no, 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 no. I still got to call cards. After we call cards, I certainly will go that direction. Call the cards, please? Call the cards, please.
One card is Dan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm concerned about what's going on in the city of Tyusville, and it does involve pay and involves motivation. And what's going on is there's numerous gag orders. I'm serious. Employees cannot, have got to be careful about what they say, about telling the truth and so forth. I'm thinking especially about these sewage spills and so forth, that they know occur, they see happening, they construct and so forth. And yet, so, for example, when I make a, when I made a complaint against Brad Parrish for a number of things, I went to Joe De Naro. And I said, you know, Joe, this is something that's very bad that he's doing, it's, it's, he didn't report it, he made a false report on sustainability, reliability, made a false report on reliability, him and Eddie Galindo. And so, I made a very good point about it and so forth, and the only recourse I had was to go to Joe, Joe De Naro. So, Pierre, from all fairness, he and our City Manager dismissed everything. Dismissed it, just like that. So, I don't believe there's anything at all in Mr. Parrish's...
I'm out. We didn't start the clock.
I don't think there's anything at all in Mr. Parrish's or in Mr. Galindo's foul, employment foul, about what he did, which is horribly terrible. And now, next, next is Mrs. Mueller, she's, she's following the same thing. So, what I did was I gave, I gave, gave him, this is Mr. Parrish, I gave him all kinds of information about the city of Tyusville, it's not sustainable. And what did he do? He threw it out the wastebasket. He never considered in his report at all, a complete false report, him and Mr. Galindo. And now, Mrs. Mueller's gonna do the same thing. It's not true. And I see, what I can see is it's costing the city millions of dollars, millions of dollars, millions of dollars. You're not listening.
I hear you.
Because I know, what, what, so one, two, three, one, somebody left, one person left. But, but this is, this is, this is, so, so we've got big problems here. We got big problems, well, I'm talking about problems, not just with, with Mr. Parrish, but we're having problems with Mr. De Naro. And our City Manager. I know of another case in which, which, which there was someone made an application who's a PE for the water resources, very qualified person. And what do you think city employed, city, city did? They didn't employ, they employed, they employed somebody with far less requirements, which they could have got somebody at a, at a good price, a professional engineer who's been experienced. Why is that? Why would they, why would the city of Tyusville hire somebody inexperienced instead of somebody experienced? Because they're afraid of him. And that's what's going on here in the city of Tyusville. You guys are afraid of what I'm doing. You're afraid of me. And that's why you're making all these rules. It's nonsense, you're scared. I don't like what you're doing. It's all by perfect love, cast out fear, and all this kind of stuff. You won't talk to me, you won't meet with me in private, you won't discuss these issues and so forth, I don't bring up to you, you won't respond to the emails, and neither will the City Manager. You guys are afraid of me, and so is Mr. Parrish. Because I got stuff on him. And I got stuff on, on, on this guy, Mr. Larice, too, for his fraud, his seventy thousand dollar fraud. You guys gotta wake up, because it's gonna come to a head sometime, and he might go to court. Mrs. Stokoe, you listen, listen to this, too, because you're a party of this thing, this seventy thousand dollar report.
Stop the clock, stop the clock.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just be done with that, because you've, you've totally left anything that was about this.
It is.
And you're throwing accusations, and you're getting worked up.
No, it's not accusations, it's facts.
So, okay, thank you for that, and you certainly have had your time.
Okay, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, thank you for listening.
Okay. Gotta remember where I'm at now. Any other cards? All right, we are, this is not a first reading, we're ready to move forward with this, okay.
Again, just as a reminder, I'll need two votes.
Two votes.
Now, two, okay, you don't have to do that.
Right, I think the and breaks it up, doesn't it? That's correct.
All right, go ahead.
Conjunction, that my teacher used to say. All right. I make, we're gonna do them one at a time. I make a motion to approve the completion of the FY twenty-three employee payment plan adjustment.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe, roll call, vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next motion, I recommend approval for the conducting of legislative body compensation and benefit review.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe, roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Both motions pass unanimously, City Manager.
On to...
City Manager, hold on that.
Yes, sir.
I wanna take a five-minute recess, we'll be back at, well, call six, we'll be back at nine thirty. Cooperation, meeting back in order. City Manager?
We're on to eleven B, which is outdoor storage and DMU zoning district, and this was tabled several times, so staff is recommending that you consider alternatives and information provided by staff regarding outdoor storage in the downtown mixed-use zoning district, and provide us direction.
Okay. Staff?
At your last meeting, you asked for informa, a map that showed the location of industrial uses. After evaluating the information that we had, we decided to provide you two exhibits, which are on page six seventy-six and six seventy-seven of your packet. One of the downtown mixed-use zoning district, and we've color-coded it based on the property appraisers' assessment codes, to identify what is, you know, different types of uses and how they assess those properties. And then, we did the second map of just the uptown district, which, remember, there are five sub-districts of the downtown zoning district. And so, this up district, we've identified, we just labeled the actual assessment codes on each of the parcels. There are about twelve parcels in there that have an auto-related type use, and that's how they're assessed by the property appraiser, and auto-related meaning uses such as repair service, auto body, dealerships, garage, RV, and recreational vehicle sales, and the like. So, I'll try and answer any questions you have, hopefully this helps you with your decision.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I know this is about a conditional use, and, but I, I tried to, but the map came to me in, in black and white, so it was a little bit harder to see. And, and I got Washington Avenue and everything kinda highlighted here. If, my first question, then I'll wait to the last one. If, if we change the, the use or designation of any of the property, the request, does it affect all of the properties up to South Street?
The, we're looking at specifically the outdoor storage limited use criteria standards.
Correct.
For outdoor storage inside the uptown district of the downtown zoning district. So, if you look on page, let me see if I can get you a different, a map that has streets on here. On, on page six seventy-seven of your packet, you'll see, it goes, the uptown district goes all the way uptown, up to, I'm sorry, is it a midtown district? Goes from South Street, four oh five, all the way down, south of South Street.
All, all the way down south, yes.
Correct.
That's correct.
To the, to Gray Street. So, if you make changes to the limitations there underneath that sub-district, it'll only apply to properties with inside that.
Within that area.
Correct.
That, that's what I wanted to know, yes. So, just does infect that, that little small lot, or, I'm just calling it small, use, may not be using the right term, but it, it has a, a larger effect?
Yeah, it wouldn't be specific to one particular property. I mean, if another property wanted to utilize or have outdoor storage, they would have to...
Okay.
Within that district, they would have to be the same standards.
That was my first, I'll save the rest for last.
Member Nelson?
I've struggled with this for weeks, and I'm sure some, some of you guys have too. And all of a sudden, I was going downtown the other day, coming from the south, and I realized that there's a lot of property between Hopkins and Washington that would meet the requirement of three hundred feet from residences, and all of that area could become storage. And I thought, that's not a consequence that I would want. So, my heart goes out. There you are. To the property owners, I'm just not sure how to do it, other than do it as a spot zoning, and we can't do that. I sure don't wanna come into town, and, what street is it? Where Kerry Kennedy's on one side, and there's the old gas station on the other side, Broad, is that? Maybe it's St. John's. But I thought, you know, you've got that huge area there, and I wouldn't wanna come into town and see it as storage.
Just to clarify, on page six seventy-nine of your packet, is a map that identifies that area you're talking about, where currently outdoor storage is permitted, because it would be outside of that three-hundred-foot distance requirement, and it's got that blue boundary there, it's highlighted in blue on that page.
Okay, which page are you on?
This is six seventy-nine of your packet. It's one of the earlier maps that we gave you.
Okay, keep going.
So, it's outlined in blue, that's the area that's currently would allow outdoor storage and meets, and would meet this three-hundred-foot setback required, distance requirement from residential. However, there are other conditions, too. You can't have outdoor storage in the front of the property and the side, so there are other conditions that would probably limit it exactly where the outdoor storage would be, so most likely would not be adjacent to Hopkins, for example, right up against the front of the street. So it actually, let's say the setback is 10 feet or 15 feet from the front property line, the outdoor storage would have to start 15 feet from that point out. So it just couldn't be in that required front yard. So in that case, in that scenario, if the building is really far back on the property, let's say 30 feet, the outdoor storage can be within that 15-foot gap between the building and the setback.
Okay.
In that scenario.
So technically, they could do some outdoor storage, they just couldn't do a lot.
Right, in the scenario of a building that's 50 feet away from the front, and the only place they can put it, the outdoor storage is between the building and the right-of-way, yeah, that 15 feet is very narrow, and that's what it would be limited to, too. So it really depends on the property size and what's going on there.
Let me move to Member Stokel. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. There's a truck sales place, so you have the RV, you have the truck, the sales area, I think I'm saying it right, and I believe that's part of that property. So if it could, technically, they go behind that truck building. Know what I'm saying?
Are you saying the outdoor storage can go behind the building?
Well, yeah, that's sort of what I'm thinking.
That's what the code's trying to intend to do, it wants it to be screened as much as possible. So yes, it's suggesting that it can be, doesn't want it in a front yard, on the side, so it should be behind something, if possible. If there's no building there, then it just has to be outside of that front yard setback.
Okay. So I think you have two buildings, one's here, one's here. That makes sense. So if you go behind the second building, you actually could have storage.
If it's behind, yeah, the buildings, yes. But again, you see on that page, that map, where applying the other condition, which is 300 feet from residential.
Right.
That limits it even further.
Okay. Okay.
Member Stokel.
Yep. So Brad, with this blue line, that is where outdoor storage is permitted for all of the downtown, uptown, midtown area. Is that correct, or just this midtown area?
So outdoor storage is only allowed in the midtown sub-district of the downtown zoning district. And so then we apply that 300-foot setback, and this is the area we've estimated where it'd only be allowed, if we had to meet that condition.
Okay.
Just that condition.
Yes, and that's kind of where I'm getting at. If you look on page 679, looking at the map of the whole downtown area, and I said this at a previous meeting, looking and thinking about the vision of what we want our whole downtown area to look like, and then seeing how outdoor storage is only permitted in the midtown area, thanks to that blue line, and that is meeting only the condition of 300 feet away from residential, not even including the other conditions, I would venture to say that outdoor storage is very difficult to put in this whole overall vision of our downtown area. And I think that's where I go back to, when I think of downtown, midtown, uptown, I'm thinking of movement, liveliness, not stagnant storage, which I feel like that's kind of where I'm at. I feel like they can do it if it meets the current criteria, I'm not really in favor of changing it, venturing into that spot zoning.
I'm hesitant, because it's kind of what I said last time, and kind of what I want to see you bring before us, but you really can't just do that, you're bringing great stuff before us. But what I said before, I'd like to see this work. I appreciate what Member Stokel was saying about, you know, having the movement, having the lively, blah, blah, blah. But when you look at it to me, it's not like, oh my gosh, you know, that's not supposed to be there. I don't think anybody would drive down there and say, oh my gosh, that's just totally out of place. I don't think. But I also see the points of the concern about what happens next. So my question to you is, what has to happen to make it work? And I know that we're going to need to hear from Rodney and whoever else wants to talk to, because you might say, here's what has to happen, and this is the only way that it can work, and they might say, we don't want to do that. And then we're in a situation, it's just not going to work. So I need to know what we as a city can say from staff to us, if you can do this, it can work, or you can say, this is never going to work. We can talk about this all day, but I need to know what's going to work.
Well, if you recall, this all began because we received an application for a conditional use permit, which is required in order to allow an outdoor storage unit use. And the particular property in question, as we reviewed the conditional use permit application and the conditions of the code, we found this condition that said, shall not be located within 300 feet of any residentially zoned district. And on the west side of that subject property, you saw the FEC railroad, which is only 100 foot wide right-of-way, and then there's a single-family home on the other side of that. So it clearly did not meet that 300-foot requirement. In order to meet it, they would have had to bring their outdoor storage 200 feet further into their property away from the railroad, and also meet the other conditions, which they were able to meet. They were able to demonstrate that in the application that we received. So really, the issue that they, that particular project had was the 300-foot requirement, and that's what started this conversation before you. So we suggested on page 678, the pros and cons, as you requested, of the alternatives, including reducing that 300-foot requirement, and what that might affect in some way, whether it's a good idea or not, or whether you want to limit that reduction of 300 feet, reduce it down to a different standard, such as 100 feet maybe, just for automobile-related uses, outdoor storage. And so then you have hazardous materials at least still having to meet that 300 feet requirement. So there's a couple of options there for you to consider. So you're asking how this can work for that particular property, I would think, and I don't know if that was your question, if that was about that particular property.
No, no, no. And to get me focused on your pros and cons, that probably answers my question as well as it can be answered. I don't think there's really anything you can put in words to say, well, if you do this, you can do this. I think this is as good as it gets right there. Anybody else on council have anything you want to say before we call cards? Because I'd kind of like to hear what they have to say. Yes, sir.
Basically, I just don't want to, I agree with Dr. Stokel that, I don't want to do anything in this area that's going to affect the rest of the downtown area. I would like to see this work, but I don't want to see it work that it's not going to benefit us and benefit the things that we're trying to do downtown. So if we decreased the 300 to, let's say arbitrarily 150, how would that affect other people coming in asking for similar types of requests? We would have to, would that be a complete, a decrease in that entire area? And I'm not talking about spot zoning or anything else, but that would be a decrease for anybody that came in, right?
Correct. If you look on page 679 of your packet, you'll see that blue boundary again, that would be bigger. So you've expanded it in other areas, if you propose 150 feet setback. But again, as I suggested, that could be a reduction for a particular type of outdoor storage, not necessarily all outdoor storage. So it's up at your discretion.
You good? City Clerk, call the cards, please.
Rodney Honeycutt.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. How are you doing?
Good, good.
Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. And so we're back here again. I'm representing RV Direct, who has RV sales and service at 1012 South Hopkins Avenue, which is in the midtown section of downtown. I enlarge my mouth and show that area, which I'll.
Yeah, like, that's the area in question. Let me look at that real quick, and I'll get back to you.
And so the only outdoor storage that my client is requesting is for vehicles, which south of there is the new car rental place, and south of there is the car dealership. And so there are vehicles, the truck, I guess, sales and service is just north of this site. And so basically, all that side of the road, the west side of Hopkins, is generally sales and service of vehicles. And so there are vehicles parked there all the time. They're asking that they have storage in the rear. They're asking that you would allow or advise them to make an ordinance change, that would be item number four on their alternatives, which is reduce the minimum distance from residential zoning from 300 feet to 100 feet for vehicle storage only. And so.
Where is that, Rodney? Which one is it?
That.
Page 678 of your packet, I believe, Mr. Honeycutt's referring to the alternatives.
Okay.
So it's the fourth one on the alternative list.
Okay.
Reduce the minimum distance from residential zoning from 300 feet to 100 for vehicle storage only, not any of the other storage items that would be less desirable, I would think. I want to remind you that, again, that the railroad track separates us at least 100 feet, the residential structure on the other side has a 25-foot setback, the wall will have to be at least 10 feet from the property line, so you end up, by the time you have a vehicle there, it's at least 135 feet separation, maybe a little more. Also, the entire storage area, not just the rear, the entire storage area has to be enclosed in an eight-foot-high solid wall or fence.
Three more?
Just, yes, at the most.
Yeah, let's go ahead, three more, because I need to hear this. Three more, please.
And so the other thing that I had mentioned, I know this is in the, this is in the midtown area, only downtown. If you go just north of the downtown area on US-1, there's a long stretch of M1 zoning, which has only a 75-foot setback from residential zone property. And it's surrounded on the northwest and south side by residential zoning. And so, I mean, I have a, I have a map. So I don't think there's been any issues in those areas. So and then also I have to remind you that if you, if you ask staff to bring back a code, then they still, you still have to vote on that. And I have to go before P and Z and go back to council. And then also, if the code is changed, then my client has to apply for a conditional use permit and present a conceptual site plan to show you how he's going to meet all of it. And so we think that we can meet it, and it'll be very good-looking, and you will not even notice that it's there.
What am I looking at here? What does this tell me here?
That tells you that that's the area that could, would be affected if this is changed.
By affected, you mean built on?
Those areas could have the outdoor storage for vehicles reduced from 300 to 100. And I have that, I did that because Councilman Robinson mentioned it, and so, yeah, so I was showing you where that area was.
Yeah, it's important, that's.
And so that goes basically from South Street. So first thing, south of South Street is the county parking lot, and then there's an area, and then, and then you get to the trucks parking, then you get to this site, then you get to the car rental place, and then the, then the car dealership, Nissan. So that's basically where it, what it affects.
How will it affect the residents on Carver Street and Lucky Street and Maxwell Street? How will that, how will they, what's the concrete, no pun intended, but how will that concretely affect them?
So I'm not sure where those streets are. I assume there's one street north.
Those are streets to the west of the midtown area.
Say again?
Those streets that you named are to the west of the midtown area.
Right.
So on the other side, on the west side of the railroad track?
Correct.
Well, the, in my opinion, they won't notice it much, because the railroad track is, is about six foot higher than the ground there already, and also there's a 100-foot barrier, and it's, there's a lot of existing growth there, too.
So this is just really the visionary of people who might notice something?
That's, that's correct. That's the area that would affect, and so that was something I know Councilman Robinson had mentioned, so I just wanted you to have him out to see that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Honeycutt?
Rodney, you know, I've been agonizing over this, just like everybody else, and, you know, while that railroad track provides a buffer area, I, my major concern is, what does it do if someone else comes in and we have to give that same variance? That's my concern, and I know visually this may be okay, and it may not affect the neighborhood. But I'm just, I guess I get concerned with the domino effect that this may cause from somebody else coming in. Help me out. Is that what can happen?
So in, in that area, the midtown, someone else could come in with a conditional use permit, and from South Street down to, I believe it's Grace, and, and present you with a conceptual site plan, if you decide if that meets the criteria you want it to.
Yeah.
And, and again, I want to just read midtown, it's not downtown, it's midtown. It said, "It is a heavier commercial fabric with larger lot uses developments such as vehicle sales, auto repair shops, and..." And I have that, I did that because Councilman Robinson mentioned it.
Right there, I have it in my picture.
Yeah, so I was showing you where that area was.
Yeah, it's important, that's.
And, and so that goes basically from South Street. So first thing, south of South Street is the county parking lot. And then there's an area, and then, and then you get to the trucks parking, then you get to, uh, this site, then you get to the car rental place, and then the, then, then, uh, the car dealership, Nissan. So that's basically where it's, what it affects.
How will it affect the residents on Carver Street and Lucky Street and Maxwell Street? How will that, how will they, what's the concrete, no pun intended, but how, how will that concretely infect them?
So I'm not sure where those streets are. I assume there's one street north.
Those are streets that are west of the midtown area.
Say again?
Those streets that you named are to the west of the midtown area.
Right.
So on the other side, on the west side of the railroad track?
Correct.
Well, um, the, in my opinion, they won't notice it much because the railroad track is, is about six foot higher than the ground there already. And also there's a hundred-foot barrier and it's, uh, there's a lot of existing, uh, growth there, too.
So this is just really the visionary of people who might notice something.
That's, that's correct. That's the area that would affect. And so that was something I know Councilman Robinson had mentioned, so I just wanted you to have a mouth to see that.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Mr. Honeycutt?
Rodney, you know, I, I, I've been agonizing over this just like everybody else and, you know, I, while that railroad track provides a bu, a buffer area, I, I, my major concern is what does it do if someone else comes in and we have to give that same variance? That, that's my concern. And I know visually this may be okay and it may not affect the neighborhood. But I'm just, I, I guess I get concerned with the domino effect that this may cause from somebody else coming in. Help, help me out. Is, is, is that what can happen?
So in, um, in that area, the midtown, someone else could come in with a conditional use permit and from South Street down to, uh, I believe it's Grace.
Yeah.
And, um, and present you with a conceptual site plan if you decide if that meets the criteria you want it to.
Yeah.
Um, and, and again, I want to just read midtown. It's not downtown, it's midtown. It said, "It is a heavier commercial fabric with larger lot uses developments such as vehicle sales, auto repair shops, and some industrial uses." So this is, this is not the downtown part, this is the midtown. The south part is kind of transitioning into it.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, I just want to remind you of that.
Yeah.
That's the definition in the code.
Rodney, uh, that, this is the railroad track, the six-foot, um, it's six-foot, right?
It's, it, it looks like to me it's six foot higher than the property.
That's going to do a lot of buffering alone, correct?
It'll, I think that will help more if there's noise because it kind of turns the noise up, just like a wall on the interstate. And then the eight-foot wall is what'll, uh, provide the visual buffer completely.
I'm not saying that this is a factor you need to consider, but I would say that came to my mind when that came up, we had that same, um, ideology come up with the concrete busting plant. There's the railroad between that and any homes. And I'm not saying good, bad, or ugly. I'm just saying that that came to my mind that there is something to be said for the height that blocks a lot of it and the height that buffers a lot of the sound, if there's sound. You don't, you're not busting concrete, but I thought that was worthy of note at least. Any other questions? All right, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. Honeycutt, appreciate it. Any other cards?
Yes, sir, Stan Johnston.
Give me some insight.
Stan Johnston, a registered professional engineer. And there's times that, you know, engineers just disagree with each other. And as far as Mr. Honeycutt, there's times I've disagreed with him. This is not one of them. And I want to comment because, uh, I heard what Mr. Cole said and I have what, I wanted to add additional to it because I've been listening to it now. And, uh, about what if someone else comes in and the domino effect and so forth? I don't see either of those being a problem because we're talking about vehicle storage only. And then we have such limitations on it. And it appears that for this business, this is a must, it's a need. And that's why I was pursuing it. It makes, it makes sense to have, uh, a s, storage and, and I, I, I see that, uh, it's, I don't see that it is a spot zoning. I don't see it because in this case, it's, it's very, it appears, that's me, my opinion, that it's, it's not spot zoning because it's making it very specific that it's vehicle storage. It's not cranes, it's not storage of lumber, it's, it's not storage of, of something else, it's, it's vehicles and it makes sense. So I'm, I don't, I don't want to go too much into it, but, but it looks like to me it's kind of, I hate to say this, but it seems like y'all doing much ado about nothing. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and as I understand it, um, Mr. Parrish, we're looking at reduce the minimum distance from residential zoning from three hundred feet to one hundred feet for vehicle storage only. That was the fourth square he had said that they were looking at.
But you had asked me at a previous meeting for alternatives.
Right.
So I suggested these alternatives. These aren't limited to the only ones. You could certainly make direction, other direction, including any changes to other conditions or even process. Right now, outdoor storage requires a, a conditional use permit, period. So you can make changes to the conditions here, or to the process of whether a CUP is required. So even if you, this is a change, right now, the way it's written is someone applies to put a new outdoor storage somewhere in the subdist, subdistrict, it'll come back to you again as a conditional use permit.
So what exactly are we looking to vote on here? We still need to craft that?
Yes, sir, I, I, the, you, you said, you asked me, the, the council asked me for some alternatives. I provided that to you on page six seventy-eight.
You definitely did.
And, but these aren't the only alternatives you can decide on.
Okay. Um, council, any other discussion or anybody want to make a move? Move anything? Okay, let's sit here and look at each other. Member Nelson?
No, let, let the Vice Mayor go first.
Vice Mayor?
I make the motion of no change.
Okay.
But no change, whoa, 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 so by no change, you, what does that mean? We're just going to leave everything as it is?
Leave everything as it is.
Yeah, it's the alternative one on the list.
Yeah.
It's what now?
Alternative one on the list is just keeping things as our.
No change to the current code. And so if, if we went down with what Rodney was just talking about, to the current code, we would say reduce the minimum distance from residential zoning from three hundred feet to one hundred feet for vehicle storage only. Okay, and that's not where you're at. You're simply saying no change to the current code.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from Member Stokoe, no change to the current code. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Thank you, you got it. Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
No.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
No.
Uh, Member Stokoe?
Yes.
And Member Cole?
No.
It, the motion passes, uh, three to two. Uh, with, uh, the mayor and Member Cole voting no. All right, with that, city manager.
We're on, excuse me, we're on to item twelve A, which is Sisson Road Townhouse Sketch Plaid. Sisson Road Towns House Townhomes is a proposed ninety-one townhome subdivision on approximately fifteen point two acres located north of Timber Trace Apartments along Sisson Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, considered this request at their February twenty twenty-three meeting and recommended amended approval five zero. The commission did express concerns about the need to widen Sisson Road in the future. Uh, staff recommends that you approve the sketch plaid for Sisson Road Townhomes, and this is a quasi-judicial matter. The city attorney will read the rules for quasi-judicial.
Okay, city attorney.
Yes, council, uh, items twelve, A, B, and C are all quasi-judicial, so these rules will apply to those items. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chambers. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. In the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the item, said visit or opinion shall be disclosed. If written ex parte communications do exist, we'll verify the applicant has received them and has had the opportunity to review them. So council, at this time, with regard to each of these items, and you can do it as each item comes up, you will need to identify any ex parte communications that may be relevant.
Anybody? Uh, on, I have, I don't call any. Zero. Ready?
The first item before you is twelve A, Sisson Road Townhomes. This is a sketch plaid. We believe it's, meets all the requirements. We've stated that on page six, uh, excuse me, six ninety of your packet. Uh, we, I'm just going to read a consistency statement here. Staff believes that the sketch plaid that's, uh, submitted to you tonight is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the land development regulations, and sketch plaid requirements described in chapter thirty-four, article three, division five, subdivision one of the city's code. The applicant is here to answer any questions. I do want to make one, uh, comment. On the next page on the cover sheet of this sketch plaid, we identified a few, uh, typos and accuracies and also statements about, uh, standards that are proposed. And we would like to suggest that the, if this is approved, that the applicant provide to us a new cover sheet with corrections. And just for the record, I'll state exactly what they are. On the cover sheet, that's sheet one, uh, under notes, it says a fifteen-foot setback is proposed. The word proposed should be removed. On note two, a minimum twenty-foot building setback separation is proposed. Again, the word proposed should be removed. On note three, one-car driveway widths are proposed at eight feet. The word proposed should be removed from there. And then on note four, two-car driveway widths are proposed at sixteen feet. Also, the word proposed to be removed. And then on note five, residents with utilized roll carts. A couple of typos, those should be corrected as well. Residents will utilize roll carts. And then under site data, uh, it says that the minimum lot size would be two thousand square feet. And we're not convinced that that's specifically required, it just has to abide by the code. So with those corrections, we recommend approval of this sketch plaid.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, I need to, uh, would like to make a proposal as soon as you're permitted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, applicant? Come on up, Mr. Applicant.
And we do not have a card from the applicant, so we'll need one.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't even know that. I didn't know the applicant had to have a card. I just thought it was kind of routine.
Correct. It's quasi-judicial, so anyone testifying, placing evidence has to, has to be under oath.
And we got a TV, man.
And the oath is on the card, so I suggest that before he testifies, he signs the oath card.
All right, um, after you do your card, name and address for the record, and then let us know what you're going to say. Say what? Wow. Surprised we're not doing anything. Just call them up. That's right.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Paulus from Paulus and Bennett, twenty-six oh-two East Livingston Street, Orlando, Florida. Um, we're here representing the project for the applicant, and we agree with the recommendation and here to answer any questions. Do you have any?
Uh, Vice Mayor, you have a question?
Yes, uh, you have, um, I guess my question would be before I make my motion, you have any, uh, problem with the, uh, recommended correction?
No, we'll remove the word proposed from all those and then make the other two corrections.
Okay, very good. Oh, Member Stokoe?
Um, yes, I just have one question. I feel like I remember when we rezoned this piece of property a while back. Is that, okay. Um, I remember one of the questions that we were concerned about was traffic going on Sisson because it's already, gets backed up sometimes. Did you guys do any type of traffic study?
So we, um, submitted for concurrency, did a concurrency, uh, application. We've also submitted to Brevard County.
Okay.
Uh, for our roadway connections to Sisson. We have two of them. We have our main entrance and then the lift station driveway. So that application for final engineering approval is under review with the county right now.
Okay. Um, and then I'm assuming Brad met our standards for what we needed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Yeah, I can testify to that. I was one of the people that pushed that because I go down that road, come out of Denise Drive every day. And I had some concerns about adding that many more cars. And the more I rode it, I will say that I feel like that's, uh, certain, and remember, our Vice Mayor Robinson can probably say the same, I think he drives it a lot, too. Um, there are certain times of the day, there are certain times of the day Highway fifty is going to be real busy, too, Barna. Um, and it, it was really when I was going to, um, Saint Mark's out there in Cocoa and I was going that way. And it was like seven-thirty, so, you know, everybody's on it. It was real busy. And I think it will be noted when more cars get there. But it's just a matter of kind of our mini rush hour, so I don't, I don't think it's a major factor. Like, I started paying more attention. It's like, you know, you come back at ten o'clock in the morning, it's very barren. In noon, there seem to be more, five, or five, five gets cranking. You know, you can't, you can't get in Highway fifty. But anyway, um, I think it, and you know, I think it'll be fine upon further review, but there's going to be some moments, especially in the morning and the afternoon, like everywhere else. Uh, Member Nelson?
I was just wondering, and stop me if I'm wrong, but I thought when we originally looked at this, we talked about a turn lane.
I think we did. I think we did. And I think that went to, uh, traffic study and that more would come back and they'd get a better idea of what they needed to do to alleviate, alleviate the problems. Because that could be a problem.
Yeah.
Having cars out on the road trying to turn into your complex because it's going to happen at five o'clock and it's going to happen, not so much at eight o'clock probably, but it'll happen, but, uh, I'm sure you guys will certainly look into that.
Yeah, I would, um, anticipated we would, according with county on that, uh, with our final plans. But we haven't gotten any review comments yet, so that may be one of the comments they may suggest, the turn lane.
Sure. Sure. Um, Vice Mayor, you still up there to make that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Um, last card is Stan Johnston.
Uh, Stan Johnston, professional engineer. I used to work on these, uh, projects on Sisson Road and, and on, on, at least one of them, uh, I reviewed it and saying that the city of Tiesville has to, uh, obtain easements for the widening of Sisson Road. And I put it in writing and so forth like that and put it on there and then, uh, when they planted it, they didn't give me, they didn't give the city the easement. They didn't do it. So I went to planning, I said, you know, what, what's happened? They said, well, we did what we wanted to do. I said, what? So I went to the city attorney, Mr. Severs. And I said, look here, we're supposed to have this easement for, for, for Sisson Road. And he said, forget planning, we'll do it, we'll get it. And so, well, by golly, he went, he went to the engineering, he got it. Now, what you ended in this situation is, what I'm telling you is, is what you heard from Mr. Parrish was this. He told you the city approved this, the city approved this, and the city approved this. I want you to understand that Sisson Road is what? It's a county road. You need to get permission from county road. I want a condition on this Sisson, Sisson Road permit that it gets approval from, from Brevard County. And it, and if you don't have it, uh, like, for example, if another lane is in there needed for turning and so forth like that, that's, that has to be in there somehow. You're making nonsense. He was right when he said about the county has to look at this. This is a county road. This is supposed to be a driveway permit from the county. You cannot continually approve just a sketch plaid without having the county permit, which the city has done repeatedly. I'm telling you, the city has repeatedly broken the law in this case, repeatedly. I'm telling you from experience. What the planner did after that, what did he say to me? He said, I'm going to get you fired, Stan. I don't like you interfering with, with playing, planning business, but that was my job. I've done it in the county and I've done it in the city. I'm fed up with planning department taking, taking rules off and just throwing things away. You need, you need to have this thing comply with the county requirements. The city didn't do that on, on Griston Road either with big projects, stupid things. I even, okay, you don't want to hear any more about it, but the thing is, I want, I would like the thing, I would like it done right. I'd like the Mr. Brad, Mr. Brad Parrish to do it right this time. I know he can, he can do it right, but you need to have condition on this that it's going to meet county requirements all the way. What am I talking about? A moratorium. What did I say? Moratorium. I said moratorium. That's what can happen to Sisson Road. Have I seen it happen before? Yes. You can have a moratorium because you don't have the capacity on more, on Sisson Road. And what you have to do, you have to wait till they build it before you can do any more building. Thank you.
Brad, just because I know we talked about this before, this is not an issue. Um, tell me about how we, uh, interact with the county. There it is a county road. We know it's a county road.
Yeah, so they'll have to get a right-of-way permit from the county, and so they will have to, and that's being done through the site plan process. This is the first step to get to that next step, which is the site plan. So they have to get a sketch plaid approved before they can submit their site plan. So I'm sure they're in communication with the county right now, and that'll have to be addressed during our site plan.
You address that, yeah. So basically, yeah, we know it's a county road. That came up the last time this came up. And they have to go through the county for the things that are county. We can't approve the things that are county. Um, any other cards? All right, um, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recommend, uh, approval of the sketch plaid for Sisson Road Towers with the staff proposed changes and corrections.
Mayor, be, before we vote, I just want to recognize it's quasi-judicial, so I'm not sure if the applicant wanted to have a last word.
Thank you, you know, would you like to say anything else, uh, Ms. Applet? I didn't think so. We did a little. Okay, you're, you're correct. I've got that written down and thought we were pretty much there, but go ahead.
Do you want to do that again?
No, you're good. You're good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, so I, I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from, I'm going to go out there to Member Cole on this one. So I'm sorry, Member Stokoe, but anyway, uh, I'm going to give one to Member Cole. But anyway, uh, I'm gonna give one to Member Cole. So I need a roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Passing unanimously, unanimously, it's getting late. Uh, I think it's a great project. The only concern I ever had at all was the, uh, the traffic at certain times, and I think you'll be fine with that. Thank you. City Manager?
Onto, uh, item twelve B, which is Falcon Roost Sketch Plat. Falcon Roost is a proposed twenty-eight-lot, single-family home subdivision on approximately fifty-three acres located north of Knox-McRae Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning authority, considered this request at their eight February twenty twenty-three meeting, recommended approval five zero. And, um, just to review, it is quasi-judicial, so if you've had any, um, ex parte communications, you have to reveal that now. And Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, first of all, I don't, anybody have any communication on this? I have not, that I know of. I don't believe I have. Um, counsel, anything you wanna say before I go to applicant?
Mr. Mayor, just to, for staff, we just need to make a statement here that we found this out, the sketch plat, again, it's the first step before going on to the next step, which is the site plan. Sketch plat is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, land development regulations, sketch plat requirements described in Chapter thirty-four, Article three, Division five, Subdivision one of the city's code. So I'll...
Yeah, and that's important that I hit that before I go to that. Thank you. Uh, City Manager, when you're doing this, you might have to go like this. I mean, it's getting late, it's getting late. No, we absolutely need that. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, and now if there's nothing from counsel, I will go to applicant. Is there, the applicant in the house? Um, any, well, any questions? Any, well, I haven't gotten, I'm still on the questions, I'm looking around, okay. Uh, see, there is a question. Vice Mayor?
I make the motion to, uh...
Hold on, hold on. Any other cards?
Stan Johnston.
Stan, Stan's gone. All right, here we go. And then you make a, nope.
Stan Johnston, uh, eight sixty points at Av. Now, professional engineer, and, uh, I wanna make a correction to something I said previously. And I said, I don't, I don't know how I said, I said, you guys are afraid of me, actually, you're afraid of the truth, about, uh, about if, that's a correction to what I've said before. So, uh, on this particular one, I'm concerned about, uh, what I've said before about Mr. Parrish. I would like you to have a, a word from him that he has checked the, the stormwater master plan on this project. And if he hasn't, have a condition on him that he checked the stormwater master plan on this project. This is a big deal. Right now, I believe the flood zone areas, the flood zone areas for exhuming these are, are not correct. Just as I went over, uh, Baker subdivision, you know, you know about this, um, Mr. Diesel?
Yes, yes.
And it was wrong, it was wrong. It was wrong by over a foot. Now, the thing is, is that you've got flood zone in that same, in that area that is not correct. It's not correct. And you, and you, you ignore it. Ignore what I say. You can't find any, you find no calculations and so forth, and, and, and I don't, as far as I know, for, for years, this guy and our planning department has not ever looked at the stormwater master plan. So I'd like you to have him look at it for this one. Maybe it don't make any difference, but I, I want you to get a condition from him, because he's done some, I'm not gonna say he's done some bad things, but Mr. Parrish has done some horrible things. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Johnston, real quick. I want for the record, I'm not afraid of you.
Beg your pardon?
I'm not afraid of you, and I'm not afraid of the truth.
I don't, I'm, I don't, I don't agree with you, because you won't talk with me. You won't meet with me.
I, well, I don't wanna go into the history of when we met one time and things got a little tricky. I'll leave that alone.
No, that wasn't tricky, that was good.
We'll talk later.
Okay.
But I've had some issues talking to you. You talked about being honest.
That's right.
We'll talk later.
Okay, let's do it, let's do it, do it. See you, too, Joe. Thank you. God bless you guys.
Just clarify. Um, where was I? That happens to me sometimes. Um... Vice Mayor, you got, you got a buttonlet?
I, I have, I have the button, my first, uh, my first thing, Mr. Mayor, is that, Brad, you said something that, was that a, a, a correction that was needed on this, or you were...
No, sir.
Just informing us of some information.
This one's good.
All right.
No changes.
I think with that being settled and understood, uh, if appropriate, I make the, uh, motion to...
Them up. They'll yell at me here in a second. Um, any other cards? Uh, applicant, have anything else I need to say? With that, sir, we are set.
All right. If, if appropriate, uh, I make the recommendation to approve the plaque, sketch plaque for Falcon Roost.
Second.
If appropriate, I have a motion.
If appropriate.
And I have a second. All right, let me get back here. Uh, Vice Mayor has made the motion, and Member Stokoe has made the second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. City Manager?
Onto item twelve C, which is approval of the final plat and the acceptance of second supplement to covenants and performance bonds for Verona Village B. Verona Village B is a proposed one hundred and seventy-three-lot, single-family subdivision on approximately a hundred and seventeen point zero six acres located west of Willow Creek Boulevard and north of Verona, Phase One subdivision. Um, staff is recommending you approve the final plat and the second supplement to the covenants for Verona Village B and accept the performance bonds for the completion of the required infrastructure and sidewalks. This agenda item is quasi-judicial, and we do have the Mylar here present during the meeting.
First, first to clarify, um, quasi-judicial, I had no contact on this. Staff?
So the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat as required by Section thirty-four dash one seventy-one of the code definition. Staff has reviewed the final plat for consistency with their approved master plan, comprehensive plan, land development regulations, and recommends approval. Staff has also reviewed the covenants and performance bonds and recommends acceptance.
Counsel, anything you wanna say? Move, no? I see nothing at this time. Uh, applicant? You wanna... Well, come on up. This makes it look more official.
We will need a card, too, from you.
Yes.
Mayor, while we're waiting on the card, um, we're getting close to extending the meeting, so you might wanna do that.
Yeah, we might go ahead and do that. Uh, I need an extension of whatever you choose. Uh, Member Nelson?
Till eleven?
I think eleven.
Ten forty-five?
It doesn't mean we'll stay till eleven, but we wanna do... It did say eleven, we don't necessarily have to go to eleven.
Yeah, eleven, and then...
Yeah, if we get there earlier, we get there earlier.
Okay. Under-promise, over-deliver.
I've got a motion to eleven, I need a second. Second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're here up to eleven. Okay.
My name's Genevieve LaBuda, I'm with Paulus and Bennett, applicant for the project, two six zero two East Livingston Street, Orlando, Florida. And I'm just here if you have any questions.
So what's your favorite thing about the project?
About the what?
The project.
That, that it's almost over.
That's a good answer, and at ten thirty, I'm gonna take that, and, uh, anybody else have any questions for her? I think it's cut and dry. Okay, any cards? Other cards?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer. I have concerned about a number of things. For example, I told you about Sisson, the sketch plat for Sisson Road Townhomes, about the, uh, uh, required condition from, uh, approval from, from, uh, Brevard County, which Mr. Parrish missed, and which you did not put in your, as a condition. Uh, and then on, for example, on Falcon's Roost, I said, you know, you need to, to, uh, uh, consider the drainage especially, the, uh, master plan, which the city, which he completely ignores, and you didn't do it. Okay, so, so here we have, this next one is final plans and acceptance of, of second supplement, so forth like that. Now, uh, now I want you to compare this with, with what's going on right now, is the city of Titusville has another plat, sketch plat, plans approved, preliminary plat approved, so forth. That is complete nonsense, complete nonsense, SNJ Oaks. I'm swearing on this. Give me a Bible, I swear on it, too. Maybe I'm not, shouldn't do that. But, but the thing is, but the thing is, is, is that, that, the, 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 the plat is wrong, but if he goes and, and he, and he says to you is, is that this final plat agrees with the preliminary plat, that's not good enough. In this case of SNJ Oaks, it's not good enough. It's garbage, it's garbage. So in other words, what you've got is, I don't know what he's doing, but I'm, so, I, I said that he's, he's not doing it bad, he's doing it horrible. For example, in this other one, what I'm talking about, SNJ Oaks, which this isn't SNJ Oaks, but if it treats it the same way, you got garbage. And I expect what you're gonna have, and I warned you, I even made a sign. Beware, you might have a new owner. What happened? You got a new owner, and he was told the survey was okay, so everything's okay. It's not okay. It's garbage. He's way off. And I was just telling Joe Robinson, four feet off on one of the corners, four feet, over four feet from the right of way. Complete nonsense. So, and I think, I think you guys, I don't know, you, you need to, to find out what the heck's going on, because the city manager's doing nothing about it, zip, zip. I've made, this has been going on for over eighteen months, zip from the city manager. And you know what? That owner, he's probably gonna, he may, he may lose about a hundred thousand dollars because of the time lost and everything else. His survey is absolutely worthless. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, any other cards? And then you wanna add, Ms. Applicant? Just glad it's almost over? All right, with that, uh, I guess we've done what we need to do. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend, uh, approval of the final plaque and acceptance of the second supplement to the covenants and performance bonds of Verona.
Just for the record, you make a motion to recommend, or to make a motion, because you said you recommend.
I thought I said make a motion.
Motion, got a motion. I have a motion from Vice Mayor, need a second?
Second.
I have a second from Member, uh, what's your name again? Uh, man, it's getting late. Um, so we have a motion, we have a second, I need a roll call vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Member Cole, I went to, no, I was looking down here, and it said clerk. I almost said Member Clark. So it's getting late. All right, uh, thank you guys so much, appreciate you being here. We appreciate those guys that get here early and stay late. All right, City Manager?
Item twelve B is discussion of rules for public participation in city council meetings. On, uh, twenty-four January twenty twenty-three, city council received a presentation from Attorney Nikki Day regarding public participation in city council meetings. This presentation provided an analysis of state and federal laws applicable to public comment at council meetings and a comparison of speaking times adopted by cities with populations comparable to the city of Titusville. Staff is seeking council's, uh, review of current rules of procedures applicable to public participation at city council meetings and provide direction for the preparation of any proposed amendments to these rules for council's consideration.
Yeah, there's nothing from staff this time, so you don't have to do this, because he's gone. All right, Member Stokoe?
Yep, um, I thought the presentation was really well done, um, at our last meeting, um, and I would be interested in, um, I was looking at the chart that was submitted for what, um, other surrounding cities allow, um, for their consent specifically, because that was where we seemed to be an outlier, and I would be interested in moving ours to three minutes. And think that we would be able to conduct business well, productively, um, and shouldn't have any issues. Would be my recommendation.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I concur. I think we need to have some changes, because there is a lot of wastage of time, and time is money, and we have the valuable citizens' time to, to, that we want to be good stewards of. I have no problem, and I've always stated, I will hear anyone's concerns.
Yep.
But, uh, uh, show me they must be correct, and they must be informative, inform me of something that is real, informing me, and inform me of something that is correct. And, uh, we could, you have the power, Mr. Mayor, to extend if we're getting...
Absolutely.
Uh, getting good information, uh...
Like today, like today, we needed to hear more.
Okay, that's what my thoughts is on.
We absolutely will extend if we need to hear more. Um, I would say, too, um, sharing, I've learned so much in the last, uh, little bit, speak of League of Cities, had a mayor's, uh, lunch about three weeks ago, maybe four now, and I proposed this. I asked what they do with consent agenda. I was amazed at how many that looked at me like, what do you mean? You do, you what? I said, uh, what, you guys don't do any time on consent agenda? Uh, some of them, or most of them, it seemed, the only time, you know, if they're gonna talk on consent agenda, they can use petitions and requests. There isn't even time for consent agenda. And then one came up to me last night, um, who wasn't at the lunch, and he heard we discussed that. He said, we do three minutes for whatever. You got, it's, it's, it's one agenda item, you get three minutes for it. There's nobody here doing more than three minutes, and some of them are doing zero minutes. So for us to do what we've done over the years, I don't know where it all started or how it got there, but, uh, we are, we are the only ones...
Yeah.
Who are, are doing that. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, also, uh, in some of the boards that, you know, I said on President's, uh, uh, board.
Right.
And, uh, the consent agenda is, consent agenda is one item. And, uh, if, uh, if we want to talk, or we pull that, as the city may, we pull that off the item and, uh, and have a discussion on that. But consent agenda, as was stated in our, in our, it's, it's one item.
And school board can have over a hundred, well over a hundred consent agenda items, and they basically do the same thing. You don't have a consent agenda three minutes, you talk about it during your petitions and requests. There is no time set aside for consent agenda with the school board. Uh, Member Cole?
I know I'm the new guy on the block, but I look at this on the back wall back here, it said, let us disagree without being disagreeable. I think that when citizens get up to talk, I don't think that it should include character assassinations. I think if you wanna talk on a subject and you have something that you disagree with, then you disagree with that thing, that particular thing.
Right.
And when you talk, you need to be accurate. I just think character assassinations, uh, don't belong in the council chamber.
Member Nelson?
I agree with the rest of you guys. Um, nobody else is giving anybody more than three minutes, and, uh, and, like the mayor said, we, and Joe said, we can always give them more time.
More time.
So that's, that's fine with me, three minutes.
If they need it.
Do we need a motion?
No, not yet, um, because I still got some more lights, but, um... Member Cole, are you looking for a motion?
I was gonna do...
Well, no, we still gotta do cards.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we'll leave it at that. I will simply say that, uh, we're the only ones doing what we're doing, and we've done it a long time. I'm not sure why it took us a long for, nobody else doing it. Yeah, we can extend, you know, if they're still talking like Kay St. Andre earlier, you know, she's always good about standing there three minutes, and she just needed a little more time to finish it. Um, and certainly, we need to hear more from Rodney, so I wanted to give him the time. So we're gonna hear what we need to hear, and let's face it, consent agenda generally is basic, you know, buying the, the gas for the car. So, um, or plugging it into the wall, thank you. So, um, or plugging it into the wall. Thank you. Um, all right, uh, call the cards, please.
I'm Stan Johnston.
Uh, remember one of the times we had a consent agenda with a million dollars? No, it wasn't a million dollars, ten million dollars. That was a, a, a upgrade of, uh, recycled water. Over ten million dollars. With consent agenda. And then, now, a few months later, it's up to thirteen and a half million. Do you know what you're doing? Okay. So, so the thing is, is regarding, uh, character assassination. Well, the thing is, is that you know what Nikki, Nikki Day said? She said in her, it says that, by golly, you've got time. These people who are here, they got time. They can call you on the phone. They can email you. They can, they don't have to discuss it in, in, in council meetings. But the thing is, I want you to understand, I'll do it over, I've done it, as I make two weeks at a time, I do calls for all the council members. I give it to, I give it to, uh, Mrs. Blaylock. She says she's contacting you to return my calls about seven, and it's, it's seven and, and more than seven days at a time in a row. And none of you return my calls. None of you. None of you return my calls. None of you return my calls. None of you. I'm talking about what Nikki Day said, what you listen to. You're not returning my calls. You're not responding to my emails. You don't even read my emails. You can't possibly.
Bring it down.
Now, listen.
Bring it down.
You cannot possibly be on a level of honesty when you're not even reading my emails. You're not doing it. I know you're not. Because when, for example, when I'm talking about this, this survey that's bonkers, how in the world can, can these, what you're supposed to be responsible people, accept a fifty-three, a fifty-foot right away, and, and somebody said, it's a city right away, which I paid, no, city paid me for twenty feet of that right away, to make a fifty-foot right away, and it's representative fifty-three foot right away. I'm talking about Elizabeth Avenue. And the city of Titusville has been continuing, prolonged, continuous nonsense of approving it. At the expense of the new owner, at the expense of myself, of expense of other people. And you're letting it go by. You're not being responsible. I'm ashamed of you. I am ashamed of you. And you are afraid of the truth. Cause you will not listen to the truth. You're not doing it. I give you the truth, you say, huh? I give you facts, and I give you pictures, nothing. I have witnesses, nothing. I'm ashamed of you. And you should be ashamed of yourself too. I want you to grow up. Cause someday it's gonna happen. You're gonna find out that your, your, your children, your grandchildren are gonna be ashamed of you. Thank you.
Any other cards?
Uh, one more. Tony Shuffalo.
Yeah, I was wondering. I got something to say. Tony Shuffalo, Tropic Street. Um, I do want to point out that actually there are three or four, I think it was Winter Haven and a, oh, something that give four, and one place even gives five minutes to their citizens.
It was a four. I saw a couple fours. I saw some twos too, though.
Yes, I did. A, a couple of twos. I wanted to actually say that I think that three minutes is fairly adequate, although, um, sometimes it's hard to get all the words in. I wanted to ask for clarification, the, um, I did print this section out of the agenda packet. So is this the new regulations that you're, the new, um, rules and for conduct that you want to have? It's very similar. It's very confusing to me. It's very similar to the one that's always attached to the agenda packet.
What's in the code, in the agenda package?
Yeah.
That is the current code that they're looking at to determine if they want to make any changes to it. We haven't proposed any changes. There's no.
Good. I would suggest that you don't make any changes because it's pretty cool, the way it works here. And it is true that, um, amongst all the city governments that I've ever in that, ever, boy, it is late, that I have ever interacted with, this one is one of the most accessible, and one of the most responsive councils that I have, um, had the privilege to work with. So I would recommend that you don't make changes to the public participation. And I wonder really what the genesis, well, I know what the, I know what the reason for this was. Um, there's, there's some people that sort of take advantage of the situation. And, um, there are a lot of people out there, a lot of citizens, because I get out and, and about a lot, not that you don't, but they don't know how to interact with council. There are things that are going on in town that they want to have opinions expressed about. They want their ideas heard. They don't know what to do. They don't know how to do it. They don't understand that it is accessible. So I would urge you not to do anything to change our ability as citizens to come and speak with you. And I just wanted to point out that, um, in the incident of this going on, that goes on all the time, that, you know, perception is nine tenths of reality.
Right before you swoop off, as you do, uh, you're a swooper. Um, I know with you, many times, we've extended your time because you weren't done. It's easily done.
Yes.
When someone is speaking about things that are pertinent.
Right.
It's easy to extend the time. We did it tonight. So I will leave it at that. Thank you. How about that for timing, huh? All right, uh, any other cards? All right, I would take a motion on this particular ordinance, or whatever we call this. Rule change, meetings, direction, provide direction. All right, so, um, yeah, I guarantee you, it'd be best to have a motion. Um, so the motion is?
Uh, my motion would be to direct staff to look at changing the time limits for consent agenda to three minutes.
Second.
I have a motion for member Nelson, a second for member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Could I just clarify before we do? You said to look at it. Do you want us to bring back an ordinance to you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We already looked at, as far as I'm concerned, we got the whole list of who's doing what. That was eye opener to me, and then I followed that with a meeting with the mayors. And they wanted to know, why, what are you guys doing up there? I mean, we don't do that. And like I said, it seemed like most of them don't even have a consent agenda time. They just put it on petitions and requests. If you want to talk about it, talk about it there.
Right.
I think we don't want to do that. I think we at least want to keep a consent agenda, a consent agenda.
And if, and in doing so, do we have the, might want to clean it up? If we can make it more efficient, we could look at other tweaks. We have that freedom to look at it. Not to make, you know, changes, but if we want to make, you know, wordsmith to the extent to do, accomplish that, and, and bring back some efficiencies maybe in, in the process.
I'd like to see it at the next meeting.
You want this, Senator?
Yes. All right, with that, um, we got a little bit where we, we got the.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City Mayor, petitions, requests, I believe, round two. And I don't think, well, petitions, requests, round two? No? No? All right, petition and request, round two. No one is there. We move to the mayor and council's report. I'm gonna be real quick. I had more written down than I'm gonna say because it is quartile. Yep, go yep with me. You're the one that always says, now I need to ask for some. Um, I would just say, I got to, uh, well, you already know this, but I got to attend the Young Leader Awards to support our very own member, Stokel, this past Friday. And, um, I'm so excited we got to recognize you here today with everybody. So congratulations on that. After I left that, um, I went to the, um, special needs kids, um, Night of Light. It's that thing Tim Tebow started with kind of their prom. I've got some pictures I'll share with you guys. It was just unbelievably great. Um, I, I know that, uh, you guys are aware of how that works, and might even been there. But, uh, it was just great. They, they were just amazing. Um, Astronaut Memorial, uh, and I know that, uh, you were there, and I can't remember who else was there. You might have been there. You're always at everything. But anyway, Astronaut Memorial, always a heartfelt event. This year was really cool because, um, I got to meet, and I think we all got to meet the Israeli consulate from Miami. And, uh, they were there to honor the Israeli astronaut Elon Ramon, who, um, lost his life, and I believe the Challenger. And, um, very sincere in honoring the USA astronauts as well. I thought it was just a little more special with that international flavor. Don't misunderstand me, honoring our astronauts is absolutely top priority. Um, but, um, and then the Chamber of Commerce installation, I'll leave that alone. But the police promotion ceremony, um, all I can think of when I was there, and those were words I used, was, you know, can you feel that it's, it's a family? It is one big family in the police, uh, department, and, um, you can feel it. And having coached for so many years, I know Willie will tell you, there was times we'd break it out to family. It gets to be a family, and, and you can just feel it. I look forward to going to, uh, the banquet in a week, soon. It's pretty quick. Cause you're gonna get the same feeling. It's gonna be the same exact feeling. And I just love that. So, um, with that, I also went to IRL Coalition Presentation and the Arbor Day event. Both were very meaningful. And with that, I'm going to, uh.
Uh, one that, speaking of police and fire, you had a meeting with some firefighters?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, I appreciate that. Yesterday afternoon, we had lunch with the new firefighters that, uh, city manager spoke of a little bit ago. I guess there's ten of them. So we got to eat lunch with them at Beefo Brady's, and, uh, I kind of asked them where they're coming from, how they got into it.
The new ones?
The new ones. It was, no, we went to the old one. Um, I don't know why we went to the old one. I would like the new one, but they said that one, so I went with them. So that was awesome. Uh, MLK Celebration at Campbell Park, and MLK service at St. James. And, um, very excited. So.
So, uh, Councilmember Cole, I just wanted you to know that, uh, two of the ten new firefighters were in the army.
Yeah, we found that out yesterday. We found that out yesterday too. So, that was a, that was a real briny point for them when they found that out. But then, but just so you know, I introduced him as a colonel in the air force, so.
You promoted him.
All right, anyway, no, I didn't. I didn't get in trouble like that. Let's start over here. Uh, Member Stokel.
Yep. Um, I will try to be brief as well. Um, thank you guys for attending those that could, those that didn't. I missed you, yes. Um, city manager did send us an email on this, so I just wanted, we can't really talk about it, um, outside of here, but I did want to bring it up with the four oh five widening. Um, really, if we want to get that project going, as I think we all do, we really need to put pressure on our state leaders. So any state senators or reps that you know, um, in order to get it moved up, I feel like on the TPO list, uh, we really need to get some money from the state. Um, so I will be pushing who I know, and if you guys know of anybody, please try to do that because it sounds like they're trying to do another section, and it could potentially push the whole project back, um, even further down the road. And I think with all of our developments that we're approving and the increase in population, I feel like that road, if you got, I'm on that road almost every day. Um, and it can be very scary going from fifty-five miles per hour to a dead stop because someone wants to turn. Um, so, just wanted to bring that up. And then the other thing, just so you guys are aware, um, there was a bill that was filed again, um, trying to make local elections partisan. So, I don't know if it will have any movement, um, but just wanted to keep you guys aware of that one. There's some other stuff going on, um, as well as their meeting and whatnot, um, that the league is trying to, um, work on. But that, that's the bigger one right now that I'm seeing. So, just wanted that on your radar.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, um, yes, I'll brief. I'll just tell you everything that I've been involved with. I was at the police promotion.
It was awesome.
Uh, it was, it's very nice to, to see that happening. And, uh, I, I commend, uh, uh, the, the, the police department and the city leadership on that. And I, I thought it was done quite well. And done well. And I know that, that takes a lot of putting thoughts together. Uh, the community meeting, uh, I enjoyed that. I thought it, uh, got a little, uh, high and mighty there at a moment. A lot of myth, uh, misthought about what, uh, a community meeting that's supposed to be about, what the objectives were, uh, with that. And I attended the, uh, FDOT, uh, project meeting, and it wasn't what I thought it was going to be. And, uh, uh, and I have, both the city manager and I, and Member Nelson were there. And, um, the city manager and I have talked on, uh, a couple of times, and he's got some thoughts running through his head. I, um, I have been to the, uh, uh, Space Coast, uh, uh, Transportation Organization, uh, meeting on this past Thursday. And again, uh, you know, you can see how they work. And if you're not bringing, uh, uh, a food bag to the, to the lunch, you may not get to eat. So, uh, uh, may, uh, maybe we can, uh, bring some, uh, a food bag to the lunch. And, and, and most of you should understand what I just said.
Oh, yeah, truly.
So bring, and it was the same way over at the, uh, MPO, uh, Metro, uh, Transportation over in Orlando. Uh, the, uh, I can't think of the guy's name right off the top of my head, but given that age, I think. Uh, but, uh, he was there, and he listened to Brevard County. Uh, it's been allocated several, uh, hundred million dollars, and none of it came to our wonderful county of Brevard for roads. And, and, and so we got to make a little bit more noise. Um, the squeaky wheel type of syndrome. Uh, Lee Brevard, uh, again, uh, it was wonderful to be there. Uh, and, uh, by the way, the, I've been to a lot of activities at, uh, there. That was the best food that they've, that I've tasted at, uh, the, uh, Hyatt. The best food. Uh, the League of Cities last night?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, uh, enjoyed being there, you know, I enjoyed, uh, I stole the, uh, the mayor's wife for a second. Uh, he came out looking for her, but.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, he came out looking for her, but I didn't want her sitting by herself.
He was very polite. She was sitting in the lobby waiting on me.
Yeah.
And he said, no, come on in here. So that was very polite of him.
Sitting at the table. And, uh, we had a good conversation.
Very nice.
Yeah, yeah, it was good. Good fellowship.
Really good people.
Uh, and, uh, that's it for me.
When we go there, we're in, in Member Stokel's domain. So, she sits, she sits at the big people's table.
Yeah.
She was way over there by the front. We were, we were in the back.
She did say hello.
I don't think, I don't know if she said hello to me. Remember Nelson?
This is going to be short. Congratulations again. Congratulations. Uh, I pretty much followed, uh, the mayor and the vice mayor around the last two weeks.
It was good.
But it did make it to one meeting, which sort of touched me. And it was Prevent of Brevard. And about a year ago, I had talked to a friend of mine, um, who works in ICU, was working in ICU. And we were talking about the drug overdoses. And I don't know how we got on that topic, but for some reason or other, we started talking about it. And he was basically, every day, there's a drug overdose. Every day. Um, so I went to this meeting, and basically, uh, Drew Warren said, come meet me, let's go have, have lunch, meet me at this meeting. And I was like, we have the money that we got from the opioid crisis. And I don't know if maybe it would be appropriate to have somebody come in from Prevent of Brevard and talk to us about what kind of strategy is good. And maybe, I know the county is supposed to take that money and use it on our behalf, but maybe we could have some kind of input into what they, what they're spending our money on. So I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I, I was pretty, I was pretty impressed with this guy. Um, and there were a couple people from the hospital there. Uh, one was, she was competing for, uh.
Christina?
Yeah. And she was like, yeah, this is a problem. So, I don't know how you guys feel, but that's my suggestion.
Think we can think about that. We have, we have four minutes left, so we're gonna skip.
Yeah, we only have four minutes.
We're gonna skip Herman, though.
Oh, my God.
He's a rookie, so I'm messing with him.
Herman has to talk fast.
All right, go ahead, Herman. I mean, Member Cole.
Okay, I want to say that I had an opportunity to see our firefighters and police department in action on that big fire we had on the Leon. I was so proud. I mean, the way they performed out there was absolutely fantastic. And the other thing was, uh, the plaque you gave on the day of social, uh, racial healing. I was a panelist at, uh, the Coco Library, and the event was sponsored by the, the Moore Center and the Humanity Task Force. And we had probably between seventy and eighty people there, and it was just fantastic. We got good press coverage at Florida today, too. fantastic. We got good press coverage at Florida today, too. Uh, next week, I'm going to Des Moines, Iowa.
Which is nothing like a cruise.
To speak at, uh, a college on one, two, two-day speaking engagement.
Wow, what's that, the college?
It's a junior college. They saw a, I did an interview on Channel Six and somebody saw it. They called me in November and asked me would I come up and speak for Black History Week, so.
Do you know the name of the college?
I can look for it.
Maybe?
It's, it's a junior college.
Okay.
Yeah, but they've got campuses all over, so I'm speaking at two different campuses.
Very cool.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's me.
Uh, City Manager?
Uh, I have no action items, um, and some dates for, uh, several workshops coming up. And it's hard to believe that, um, we're already starting to plan for the 2023 Student Award Ceremony. That means graduation for some of our, our kids are happening. Um, so with that, uh, we have one more agenda item, uh, with City Attorney, and subject to your questions.
Nothing else, then? City Attorney, you're good?
Yes, I have an item under my report.
Well, you need to hurry up, man. You've got two minutes.
Yes, sir. Sixteen A, this is, uh, with regard to your amnesty program. Uh, the property located at Twenty-Nine Tenth, St. Mark's Drive, was subject to a code enforcement lien recorded back in 2017. The property was brought into compliance. However, the lien accrued a balance of twenty-two thousand and, and change. The city's code enforcement lien amnesty program had begun in April of twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one. In June of 2021, the property owner applied and was eligible to resolve his code enforcement case with the payment of fifteen hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. The payment had to be made by August ninth, 2021, which was sixty days after the program eligibility. He had paid a thousand dollars at that time towards the program. After that time, if you recall, council amended the program to allow a hundred and twenty days to pay, uh, which brought the deadline to October seventh, 2021, for the collection of the remaining balance of five hundred and forty-six dollars. That check was held by a title company. I believe he did refinancing to pay off that five, the rest of it. The title company didn't get us the check until after the hundred and twenty day deadline expired. But we processed it and financed. They deposited the check. And I just merely want your permission to go ahead and release that lien under the program, even though he missed the hundred and twenty day deadline. He still met the intent of the program, qualified for the program, made the payments to the city. But I wanted to make sure that you authorized me to sign that release.
I need a motion to do that.
We have one card.
We have a card. Okay, we're gonna talk.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, come on up. Glad you said that. I would've forgotten about cards.
I don't think y'all like me up here, but I'm Stan Johnston, eight sixty-four, Sett Avenue. And, uh, uh, I'm listening to what Mr. Broome says, but, uh, appears to me is that when you cash somebody's check, that's an acceptance right there. I mean, whether you accept it or not, it looks like the city's already accepted it. That's what it looks like to me. I mean, how can you cash somebody's check and say, "Well, we don't accept it"? Whoa. So it looks like the city is, and, and I'm bungled, too. But, uh, I don't know, you're, there's an attorney right there, too. I can't imagine somebody cashing a check and then saying, "Well, you know, I didn't accept the check. I didn't accept it." I want y'all to think about that because I think that, uh, sometimes the city makes mistakes. And, uh, well, no, I think, I know the city at times does make mistakes. And my bag right there is full of errors and dishonesty and avoidance of the truth and hiding the truth. So, uh, thank you very much for, uh, listening to me tonight. And, uh, I think that when I call you guys, when I say you guys are fools or hypocrites or minions or puppets or something like that, I don't think that's assassination of your character. As far as I can see it, you should, you should listen to what I'm saying. Because that's what my dad would say. That you guys, in this case, when you're listening to this, 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 uh, city manager, he's a fruitcake. And that's what my dad would say. Excuse me. Thank you.
He's got a bag that says, "Best day ever."
Yes, please. Uh, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
My daddy, my father, which are in heaven, he says, "We should not judge."
All right, we're good. Go ahead. You got, and your bag says, "Best day ever," is what I was getting at. All right, uh, did we do it?
Read it again, Mr. Bister.
Did we vote?
No, we didn't. I was gonna make the motion.
Did, did we vote?
No, no.
I believe you're saying, "Gosh, we didn't vote yet."
Can I, I move to approve the recording at the satisfaction of late second.
I have a motion, a second. All of us in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you. Anything else? Meeting adjourned. Now, that was solid. All righty.